Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the second day of our April Kentucky Board of Education meeting. So glad you're here. Also welcoming our colleagues on the virtual Zoom session today. Glad they're here as well. Dr. Brewer, would you please call the roll?
Joanne Havens.
Here. Holly Bledworth.
Holly Bledworth, here.
Randy Poe.
Present.
Sharon Robinson.
Present.
Lee Todd.
Here.
Steve Trimble.
Here.
Lou Young.
Lou Young, here.
Joanna Stevens.
Here.
Drew Dahlé.
Here.
Brittany Jamie Lynch.
Brittany Lynch attending virtually.
Here you go. Excellent. Thank you so much. Always our favorite part, one of our favorite parts of the agenda is the good news item section. We'll start with Mr. Trimble.
All right. CTE students showcased their programs at the Kentucky State Capitol. Students participating in one of 32 different career and technical education programs across Kentucky got the chance to show what they were learning at the Kentucky State Capitol on February 21st. The event showcasing CTE benefits was part of KD's celebration of Career and Technical Education Month. General seemingly increased funding for CTE by $58 million in the 2022-2024 annual budget, allowing the number of funded CTE locations to increase from 96 to 316. In the 2021-2022 school year, 71% of Kentucky high school students, which is nearly 140,000 people, participated in CTE programs. More than 50,000 Kentucky students were affiliated with the Career and Technical Student Organization in the state of Kentucky. I didn't get to attend the showcase at the Capitol, but I was fortunate enough to attend it at the KSBA conference. And they were doing some amazing projects and they were showcasing, I did want to congratulate all 32 programs that were involved in that showcase.
Thanks. Thank you so much. And Dr. R, as we just continue to love to see all of the great things happening in CTE across Kentucky. So thanks for your leadership there as well. I get the privilege of having the second item, and that's Cassidy Elementary Schools. One of my schools when I was in Baytown County, and it has been named a U.S. Department of Education Green Ribbon School. You may have heard about the Blue Ribbon Schools program, but Green Ribbon Schools is a public engagement program focused on school sustainability, structured as an award-style initiative. And so Cassidy was selected because they have this amazing outdoor classroom. It's an accessible facility, and it includes raised bed gardens, a butterfly habitat, a rain garden, composting, vermiculture, and other engaging spaces. Every year Cassidy students explore numerous topics by using the outdoor garden and also in their indoor classroom settings, including raising trout through the trout in the classroom program. Who knew? Environmental challenges, the impacts of transportation on the environment, solar energy, and wastewater treatment. The Green Ribbon Schools program celebrates organizations, including individual schools, school districts, post-secondary institutions, and early learning centers who implement cost-saving, health-promoting, and performance-enhancing sustainability practices. So congratulations to Cassidy Elementary School in Baytown County. And then to Ms. Stevens.
Kentucky recognized 104 teachers newly certified by the National Board for Professional Teaching Standards during the virtual ceremony on February 9. Kentucky has been ninth-largest class of newly certified National Board certified teachers nationally. So these educators join more than 4,283 teachers from across the state who have gone through the highly reflective and transformative professional development. Nearly 1,400 of their colleagues are currently pursuing certification. Kentucky ranked sixth based on the total number of National Board certified teachers as a percentage of the 2021-2022 teacher workforce in each state. National Board certification is voluntary. It is open to all teachers who have at least three years of classroom experience and a teaching license. It's available in 25 different certificate areas from preschool through 12th grade. Kentucky has strong statewide support for National Board certification. As a National Board teacher, I am appreciative of the financial incentive that the state offers. So I know personally, it made me more intentional and reflective as a teacher when I did the program nine years ago. And then this weekend, I will be submitting my renewal.
Ten years.
So I have everything ready. I'm free of it. But congratulations to all of Kentucky's new National Board certified teachers.
Excellent. That's great. Six in the nation. And Patrice, are you National Board certified?
I went through two sessions. I went through two, yes. It just rolled off.
Oh, wow. For 20 years, that was. What about Holly? Holly just renewed. Excellent. Yes. For 20 years. Excellent. So Holly just renewed too?
I renewed, yes. I was part of the renewal class this time.
The original. An OG, National Board certified teacher.
I just want to point out during the celebration, the interpreter and I were watching very scared.
Flammer Shaw. Thank you, Paul and Tony. Arnie, Sharon.
Speaking of Tony. Well, I was reflecting, I was just taking a minute to reflect on the great honor and privilege it was for me to work on developing the board certification system and working with educational testing services, the first contractor for the National Board, right to the profession of teaching, performance assessment that was valid and reliable and usable for a very consequential decision for the teachers and run by the teachers. So it was the first time in my career to experience assessment in the service of learning. So I take a lot of pride in seeing it still implemented today, and I take a lot of pride in presenting my good news item to celebrate one of the incredible staff here at the Kentucky Department of Education. You know, we often speak of our staff and see them as real stars because they serve us so well. And so it's really special for us to know that their own professional communities also see them as stars. Once again, we celebrate KD's staff. Department of Education Chief Communications Officer, Attorney Tom Tatman, has been awarded the 2023 Oldie Jones Memorial Award from the Kentucky School Public Relations Association. He received the top honor for school public relations in Kentucky at the Spring Conference on March 24th in Owensburg. This award is presented annually to the KYSPRA member for outstanding service to the organization and to school public relations overall. Tatman has been with KD since January 2020. Prior to that, she was a communications coordinator for Jefferson County Public Schools and a journalist covering education in Kentucky and two other states over 16 years. Knox County Public Schools Communications Director Frank Shelton nominated Tatman because of her exceptional performance during COVID-19 and the positive changes in KD communication since then. He said Tatman worked tirelessly to keep school employees, families, and the Commonwealth updated about the latest developments, and her leadership has allowed KD to grow its communications efforts and strategy. Under her leadership, KD's communications oversee social media and graphic design efforts, published the department's flagship publication, Kentucky Teacher, assists with the development of innovative online tools, served the Commissioner's Student Advisory Council, and oversees all statewide student and teacher recognition programs, including the Teacher of the Year Milken Award and the U.S. Senate Youth Program. Commissioner Glass at Tatman is an incredible communications professional storyteller and person. Congratulations.
Bravo. Congratulations, Tony. Thank you. Excellent. And then we have Dr. Todd.
Educators Rising is the Career and Technical Student Organization for middle and high school students that are interested in education-related careers. Commissioner Glass calls this one of the true bright spots in our workforce pipeline. It's much needed. My good news is for this year's conference, which was held on March the 2nd, development attendance. There were 576 students in attendance, representing 41 schools. 343 of those entered into competitive events. We were told yesterday the event this year was so successful, they're going to move their location next year to go to a larger city. So it's a way that we have of trying to build a pipeline, get the students educated early about the opportunities that we need to stick with them, get them through the pipeline, change education. So congratulations to Ed Rising for the tremendous conference.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. Lots of good news this morning. Thank you so much. At this time, we get to turn our attention a little bit internally for the opportunity on each agenda that we have to share. Any items that board members would like to talk about, things that you've been doing, anything for clarification, referrals to a committee, scheduling, et cetera. Mrs. McCreary.
Right. I had the honor and the privilege of serving on the whole school, whole community, whole child subcommittee for the board, whole everything. And it is amazing because the cluster of individuals that are pulled together truly do support the whole child within the Commonwealth, and it's an incredible group to get together. And one of the exciting things that I learned, we meet the day before our meeting starts. And one of the exciting things that I learned this past week is we, the Commonwealth, has the National High School PE Teacher of the Year.
Jordan Mandle.
Yes, Jordan Mandle is the National High School PE Teacher of the Year among five finalists around the country, and he was named the awards winner. So that's exciting.
Jordan is at Steen High School.
Yes, he is. Yes. Yes. Also, I'll be leaving in a couple of weeks to head to a national conference in Omaha, Nebraska with them. There are 16 states that are coming together to see how we can best meet the needs of our children.
Excellent. We might want to add a spotlight agenda item to get some details on that if you would be able to.
Oh, sorry. Yeah.
Thank you. And thanks for your service there, because I know that's an additional eleven minutes of time. And other board members.
One thing I would like to share, after COVID and not being able to be out in the schools like I was used to doing, it's really been rewarding to be back among the students, getting to do some volunteer work and see some other. I recently went to the Governor's Cup competition for elementary, the district and regional, and that's so exciting to see those kids competing. I also attended the Vex Robotics Governor's Robot Rumble, which was awesome. It was held at Mark Land Collins High School, and to see those kids with those robots out there and their little rumbles, it was quite amazing. And but the thing that has always been the most to me is my little mentor in the schools, being able to mentor students. And it's been, I've been, I've really been missing that, and it's so good to be back with one of the students. And it's just a little heartbreaking sometimes to see what these kids have to go through. So but it's very rewarding to me to get to work with that student.
Oh, excellent. Thank you for doing that. That's in Erie County, I guess. Excellent. Thank you. I would like to share that I was able to attend, thank you all for your support, the NASB Legislative Conference. April, March. Anyway, it's a blur. Not too long ago, it was March. Yes. And Jude, I got to meet a friend of yours. I'm now traveling in your, with your entourage. I had the privilege of presenting a session on student service on state boards of education. So we had a panel discussion, and I met Ryan Hapner, who loves Jude and has been running with some work that you've been doing with Dr. Robinson and NASB. And so I was on a panel with Ryan, who is a student board member at the Maine Board of Education, and China Burgess Jones, who is a student member at the DC Board of Ed, and I. And we presented about, you know, why it is so important to include student voices on state boards of education and local boards of education. So it was a really great opportunity. We were at one spot, and the commissioner and his team were at another spot while CCSO convened. And so on the first night, we met jointly with NASB and CCSO to hear Lamar Burton talk about the work that he continues to do after Reading Rainbow around literacy. So looking forward to follow-up conversation on that today, Mickey and team. And it was a really, really productive event. I thought it was helpful certainly for my own learning, but being able to spotlight student voice on the boards was really quite a privilege. So just wanted to share about that. Any other board members, Sharon? Oh, Holly, thank you. You're over my left shoulder, Holly, so thank you.
Yes, I just wanted to say thank you to Dr. Thomas Woods Tucker. The Diversity Action Committee at Murray State hosted him for a day at Murray State, and he did such a great job speaking with classes. He also met with a panel to just help give us insight into some of the initiatives that we're doing at Murray State. And then he also gave a lecture. So he had a very busy time at Murray State, but he represented us well, and we really appreciated the visit.
Okay, excellent. I heard you guys got to visit some good eating establishments while there. He was talking about a three-inch pork chop, so I'll just leave it at that.
Three inches across.
They were making these symbols. Excellent. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate Dr. Woods Tucker being able to make that trip to the hinterlands of Murray. Excellent. Thank you all so much. Any last sharing items? I don't want to rush it. Always happy to hear what you guys are working. All right. Thank you. Are you going to talk about yesterday in your, if you have a chance? Okay. Excellent. We're going to do a learning agenda before reports, right? Okay. All right. The next item on our agenda is around our learning agenda. You may recall that typically in October, we set our annual goals. And for the past three years, we've done that at a really, I would say, an institutional programmatic level. And those goals are five really solid goals around deeper learning, workforce, equity, et cetera. Early childhood, and I shouldn't have tried to name them because now the fifth one is escaping me. But in our kind of recent discussions, I would say December, February, and moving into today, we've been talking about perhaps the need to think about internal goals and as well as the impact of those, our own learning agenda on our larger, broader goals, as we've been talking about literacy, numeracy, STEM, and some other things. So we touched on this briefly in yesterday's meeting, but Meredith has put together a learning agenda draft for our consideration. And do they have that in their packets? Okay, great. So we wanted to start there. Please understand that this is sloppy copy draft, just a starting point, a launchpad for this conversation. So nothing in this document is intractable. We're able to just make any changes that we want to make. So it's not in the portal.
Okay, let me add it. I thought.
Okay. Yeah, so we're going to add that to the portal. So you'll have this to refer to. I think we might have some slides. And I really appreciate the collaboration with Meredith to think about what this, how we could approach the work. Because one of the things that I think Jason does a really good job about and kind of has reminded us from time to time that we have to be very strategic and tactical about the goals that we establish because too many goals, and we're kind of wandering from place to place, and we really likely won't establish any real action. At the same time, we don't want to be televisioned about the work that we're doing. So we hear some pretty consistent conversation around literacy nationally and certainly in Kentucky, as well as the conversation that Dr. Poe brought up in terms of making sure that in the literacy conversation, we think about numeracy as well. And one of the things that I like to stress is that literacy and numeracy are hand-in-glove concepts in the deeper learning movement. We don't think deeply about things that we don't read or write about, or things math that we don't actually do to make the critical thinking come alive. So as we look, as we learn together today with Mickey's presentation moving forward, with all of the conversations we have around United We Learn, we also wanted to put these concepts into play around these goals. Sorry, that was a bit rambling, but if we would take a look at these slides, you will recall that the synthesis of information from the Coalition for Advancing Education morphed into the Kentucky United We Learn Cool Council. And the United We Learn platform is, targets three big ideas. And those three big ideas are vibrant student experiences, accelerating innovation, especially as that applies to assessment and accountability, which has been a stated goal of this team from the very beginning, and collaboration, deep engagement and collaboration with communities. And Jason and the team, as we conducted hundreds of conversations around what Kentuckians want for public education in the Commonwealth, these were those persistent, top-of-mind ideas that bubbled up out of those conversations. So the Cool Council itself is in the process of our second big meeting of the year, coming up April 25 and 26, I think. Karen, did I get those right? And so here's just a brief description of what we've asked this team of thought partners to be doing and thinking about as we move together, move forward. So one of the things that I appreciate so much about Randy that he brings to our conversation is the board's got to know how these pieces all fit together. So as we think about what would become a formal learning agenda, a platform, a strategic plan for the board itself, not the department of course, then how can we bring all these things together? So that's the picture on the front of the Jigsaw puzzle that we're trying to create with this learning agenda. Meredith also did a great job of kind of scanning the tools and environment that are happening in KD right now. And this is something that David and his team brought to us maybe 12, 15 months ago. Just another graphic that helps us visualize one of the elements of the United We Learn council work. And this is around the inclusive learner experience. So we haven't leveraged this a lot, but you'll see in here embedded several of the ideas that we've talked about in United We Learn. So you see vibrant learning, right out of the gate, prepared graduate in the center, the focus there that now becomes our own portrait of a learner. Assessment practices, precursor to innovation for assessment and accountability. And then you see those mindsets and structures on the outer circle. Really important about this graphic, and I know David's team who are thoughtful in this regard, is that it emanates from the student in the center, which is important to the work.
Can I ask?
Please, please.
You know, to my comment yesterday about the, whatever we call them, finance, the ABRs or whatever.
Yeah, right.
This is the part that I was talking about in relationship. It's one thing to have a fund for our bottom level. We have to have a fund for this too. If we don't, we're never going to transform the system. We're just always going to be tinkering in technical changes.
Excellent.
I just wanted to say that this is a better representation of what I was trying to talk about yesterday.
Well, I think that was really helpful in several things. Your comments and several others made comments yesterday that I thought were really informative for this conversation that we're having this morning. And in that regard, I agree. I think one of the reasons that we want to have the conversation and be very strategic and tactical about this work is so that Jason and his team are better informed through the ABR process. It's not about just funding United We Learn. It's looking across all of the funds that are available and then thinking about how we integrate those funds for optimizing, I think that was your word yesterday, Sharon. From a business optimization standpoint, how do we ensure that the work that we want to get done is a priority for the team? So I think that's really helpful to capture that in the agenda as well.
So I think this picture helps us, it really speaks volumes. And I just want to remind us that we're talking about assessment practices to collect information that helps us know that accountability mindset, this outcomes mindset, it is like the focus on, well, what do you want to know after you've done all this work? How are you going to know if it made a difference? And as we embrace that mindset, I think we can help policymakers understand better how to help us rather than being reluctant to talk about the outcomes because the tools that we've been using have been so, I mean, they've been clunky. They're almost ancient when it comes to getting at the things we really want.
And they take us to places we don't want to go.
And exactly. So I think if we embrace this, and but it means then that we've got to build those accountability structures, the data systems, the ways of documenting performance that help us, first of all, help us be informed about what we need to change. And it also helps us tell others how to help in making the changes that we aspire to make on behalf of fulfilling their aspirations, their vision, their direction. So I really, I believe that this graphic is really.
That's your goal, I think. So your goal. There you go, Randy.
And a comment on what Sharon said. That's, you know, that's where the assessment practices come into play. You know, I admire the work that School Improvement, Kelly's work that they do. But that's not getting that accountability mindset that we have there. Those reports, and I understand why they're there. They help the bottom-level schools put in some structures to get out of the box. But they, they're just, they, those are not going to change, transform the system that we want for United We Learn. So our school improvement has to, because those reports will come out, you can have a school system that's making great strides, but then in this one area of federal accountability, they're not. But they're trying to change the culture and systems, but then they get whacked over here. This is where I always said, it's like, are we committed to a new system because we got people out there on the limb? And then with this, they get that report, and it's like we're sawing the limb off, and they're out there by themselves. And the community then says, this school's not doing something well, when in fact, they're doing great things to transform, and they, they're in that dip, and they need three to five years to get out of that dip, to go up to really change the system. So that's the reason why we really have to, you know, have a fun for the department to do these things that we're saying, not just bottom.
Yeah, yeah, I agree completely. And I think just make sure you take a minute to read the accountability mindset and the accountability structures, no care, because those two together tie those conversations. So we've been laboring under a system that doesn't terminate in the outcomes that we want for every learner. And then it causes us to do things as a system, as a local and state system, that takes us in a direction we don't, we know is not best for kids. And we've been there for 20-plus years. So I also really appreciate these conversations and the ones that we already have because our conversations are not about anti-accountability. The conversations are about to whom should we be accountable? And the answer to that question shouldn't be the federal government. We should be accountable to the children and families we serve in our local communities. And we need a system that incentivizes that level of direct, deep accountability. But it also has to be measurable. It has to be valid. It has to be reliable. So this is not anti-accountability. This instead is shifting to a mindset that says accountability for us means pivoting the system in such a way that the needs of every learner in fact are met and shaking off a lot of the old limits. Patrice?
I love this because it is exactly the opposite of what we're doing right now.
I love this because it is exactly the opposite of what we're doing right now in every work.
You love it because it's not what we're doing?
No, 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 no. I love this because what we have done in the past to our children, we have put the accountability structures in the center and then it goes out to our children. We have, we have focused more on what do we have to perform? What, what is our performance instead of our children? And so finally, we put our, our individual students at the heart of the matter.
Yeah.
Ah, you're on track. We just need to get there.
Yeah, I, I agree too, Teresa. And I think we're living right now, Jason, I think you probably feel this too, but I think in United We Learn, Karen, we're living between the third and, the fourth and fifth bullets there, that we're really in that work to determine kind of what clarity we need on a large Commonwealth wide basis around what we want, what that accountability mindset actually means. And we hear that in United We Learn all the time. And that was one of the really clammy symbols in the United We Learn message was that test-based accountability is not satisfying anybody in the process. And then how we take this new understanding and learning across the Commonwealth and from there launch into what the new structures would have to be focusing on the outcomes that we all value for our learners. The next graphic is one that you will recognize. It's our very own version of Trivial Pursuit Circle. Meredith, when you name these things, they just stick with me, but thanks to our work back in October, we have agreed that we want to model a portrait of a learner for all of Kentucky's districts and what that looks like. And so if you toggle back to that one before, please, if you look at prepared graduate and student in the center, and then our portrait of a learner, you'll see that if we had a little heart on that fellow, David, we can have a little heart that looks a lot like the portrait of a learner in this model. So you can, again, I'm, I'm taking just a few minutes this morning to look at the coalescence that's happening around these big ideas and have been happening since last fall. So the, the document is in the portal, if you want to go ahead and open that up. And we will be just engaging in this in the discussion today. I appreciate that Meredith kind of picked up on my sense of urgency about this work and calling it a call to action. I also want to give credit to our neighbors to the north, Thomason, Ohio, that we saw some strategic level of planning work that they had done and really liked the look and feel of it and thought they got it a lot of things. So we've riffed on, on Ohio and Kentucky for a change, so. So this is what we have in mind for the contents of this document, starting with work that we've already either ratified together around vision and mission, or the new work that we've done as a state board since December of 2019. And those goals, let's pause there a minute, Meredith, on the existing goals from last October, which are really only a slightly amended version of the goals from October That's on page four of the document. Not suggesting at all that we would change those. We'll look at those again in October, but certainly we have the possibility of adding a set of goals here that might look like internal board goals. But you'll see that the document continues on to really just capture our work. And I think if nothing else, then this call to action piece is a good representation of kind of the legacy work that we've done in our first three years together. A lot of this refers back to the United We Learn work. So you'll see that dovetailing of those. Let's take a look at page 10, Meredith. And so she's devoted real estate in the report around the three big ideas. So, and those are the ones that we continue to drill into in United We Learn. So we have standing committees with United We Learn around each one of the three big ideas. And so at the convening in April, they'll be sharing out the, the work that they've been doing since we met last in the fall. I think that was November 1st, maybe. And then we have blank pages from there forward. So today's conversation is about giving Meredith and team a lot of information about filling these pages. So I'm going to hush, wanted to contextualize that for us today, but just open up for a few, a brief conversation about these ideas and thoughts that you might have and how we might leverage this kind of a document for our work moving forward. Lee.
I love that I'm doing section of the entire conversation. I think back right now, we had a big conversation about education in Kentucky, careless. People would like to think that we were enlightened, but we weren't. We were unconstitutional. And then school and court sent us to the data. But it caused a statewide conversation to raise the awareness that people around the state about the decent. On the other hand, we had a conversation, Paul Patton's end, we changed higher education and it became controversial because we had a valid situation. And then the challenge UK to become top 20, but that was at least in the conversation, people thinking about it. How do we get a conversation going here? The things that I see in this document are wonderful. But if I were to go give a test to our legislators, say, give me the five most pressing things about education in your mind, I'm not sure this would come up. But what we're trying to do is change the way children learn, the kind of way, the way we change how we assess that. Those are pretty fundamental, but they don't get a conversation. And hesitant to say what the conversation has been conducted right now, I don't want to get into that. But you have to have some kind of driver if you're going to make change. And I'm not sure we're at the point where we have a driver. So we've got to find a way to put this nail in the board strong enough to say, we are really hard, talk to people around the state of Kentucky, but what do you want to see? We have a portrait of graduates. Did our legislators sell us what that is? Maybe one or two, I doubt it. And we didn't do all the work to try to change the way kids are learning. We met with a teacher who said, I taught 23 years, thought it was pretty good, but until I use this new approach, I realize I'm not really teaching the kids how to think. I'm telling them, what are they doing? Now we're telling you, you got to think about this. Those are fundamental of what we're doing. We're doing a hell of a good job of that, but it's not in the conversation. And unfortunately, an unconstitutional funding system got us into conversation. The ripping apart of the higher education system got us into a conversation. We've got to get in conversation somehow about education changing in Kentucky. And how do we take these things that we're putting in place, investigate what in the state, around the state and sitting in this sphere? How do we get that conversation going? Where, just as a one point, after the top 20 mission was issued by Paul Patton, about six months later, I got that condition, UK. And I realized it was kind of like a foam rubber pillow thing. While it was having a controversy, the pillow was depressed, people knew about it. After six months, it's back to where it was because it wasn't, nobody felt the urgency. We wrote a plan. I went to each legislator who had voted for us to become a top 20 university, went in their office, the Odoms of Kentucky, wherever they live. And I took this, I said, did you vote for us to be top 20? Oh, yeah, yeah, I did that. Here's what we want to do. Went through the plan. Now, is there anything else we need to do? They didn't have any suggestions, but we got the conversation going. And I think that's what I feel about this, is we're doing thousands and pounds of wonderful work. Let's find out how to turn the burner up on it in such a way that we can give it a stick, make the difference that we want it to make. Because we can't be the only people who want this to happen. A lot of people in the state that want it to, but they're, they're not rallying behind this just yet. So that's massive.
Thank you so much. That perspective just always kind of re-anchors me to how important it is for our leadership that we get really, really clear about what we want to see. And I think the word that kept running through my mind as you were speaking, Lee, was catalyze. So how can we use, can we leverage or use this document in such a way that it really catalyzes what happens in the next two, three, or four years as we move forward? Political winds blow as they will blow, we want clarity. And we really want to provide that kind of leadership and direction for the agency so that they are celebrated and supported for helping us to move in this direction. And I think accountability is going to be critical if we're going to see that change. Yeah, I see Patrice whispering urgency, but it does feel like that. I feel more urgent frankly, since the legislative session than I felt since 2019. So I think it's really important for us to put this all on paper and into action as Other thoughts? Your browser net?
Yeah, they are because I think, Lee, your comment kind of brings us back to what feels like a very uncomfortable reality of embracing that our work and our leadership responsibility requires, that it's almost like missionary work. You got to go where folks don't know.
And fields are blind under harvest.
Well, you know, I think the Cool Council represents another important asset of folks who know and need to be mobilized and supported in their work of telling the good news and bringing awareness to the folks who can either help us get there or trip us up. And to just ignore that, I mean, I'm, I'm not really comfortable saying these things publicly, but I mean, the truth is the truth. We've got to engage the members of the General Assembly, and I believe that there's no voice more authentic or influential than folks in the local community. And I constantly believe that change doesn't happen without bottom up energy and, and execution as well as top down cheerleading, vision listening, you know, all of that stuff that happens. But I, you know, it's humbling. We can do all this good work and be really proud of it, but if we don't mobilize the folks in the local communities that are doing the United We Learn work and help them not just promote the vision that they have locally, and, I mean, they're doing amazing work, but they have to become tellers of their story in a way that will permit us to continue to support this work and get it done and create, you know, create something for three years from now, which will present a different problem than the problems we've come up with today. I mean, that is, it's not like we're going to be problem free, but we're going to be at a different, we're going to be a different facet of change and continue to inspire and challenge our local communities on behalf of their vision for students.
See, Trent, oh, Lee, Sharon, Sharon, but I can't agree more with what you said. It's, it, it is hard for us to go out and to sell something when we don't know what we're selling.
Yeah.
So, you know, going through this thing as we fill in these next pages, I think it is incumbent, as, as Lee said, Sharon and everybody here, that if we know what we're selling, and then that's where we need to then go to, as you said, the legislature and the others, to be there so that we can, if, if we're the representatives of our regions, we've got to be there supporting those superintendents, those administrators, those teachers in that region.
Yeah.
Of the work that they're doing and letting them know that we're there to support them and, and not criticize them, because I think that's what is out there a little bit, because they're, they're feeling that in the legislature and the other thing, from whatever attacks that we want to say. And as Lee said, we don't need to go down that rabbit hole, but that's what they feel. So they, they need to know that somebody's there.
Excellent. You guys, thank you so much. Galvanize was, I mean, no, no, catalyze was the word I kept thinking about with Lee. Galvanize is the word I kept thinking about with Sharon, and unify is the word that came out of what you were saying for me, Randy. And I think that those are really powerful concepts, and this is just going to be a document, but it can do those things for us. I know I'll be meeting with members of the General Assembly throughout the summer during the interim and having these conversations, but being able to go forward and say, this state board of education believes in these things for all kids in the Commonwealth. And then we, you hear it in the field, just like I do. The co-ops are hungry for this, districts are hungry for this, the L3 districts are the want to be validated in their efforts to do these kinds of things. And I think that when we have this document ready to disseminate, folks will say, yeah, this is who we are about in public education in the state of Kentucky.
And we can speak to.
Exactly.
As Lee said, when we sit down, we all have the same bullets that's coming.
Exactly. Jason?
Thank you. I'm thinking about Dr. Collier's book. Part of the statements that he made was around any organization, you profess a set of values, that that is a worthless exercise unless you're willing to accept the pain that comes with really adopting those values. So when we talk about creating truly learner-centered or student-centered education system, that comes with choices. And those choices will create some pain, tension. When it hits the right work, it's what Kentuckians hold us that they want. And the meeting that I was at yesterday in Washington was all about this shift, moving from change approaches that were largely centered on creation of assessment, accountability systems, structure, standards and content, discussions around school choice and sort of created free market in education. You can get to a student experience from those places, but it requires some pretzel logic to get to that.
Some tail and dog lagging.
Right. It's not directly at what is the student experience and how can you make that work? So what I think is important in this discussion that the board is having and the direction taken with United We Learn is it clearly puts this experience of the student is at the center. That is the, that is the prime foundational point where something needs to be different. And so that's going to lead to some, already has led to decisions and choices that are painful, where you have to let some things go and focus on some things in different ways. It will, it will cause us to, and is already causing us to reconsider our accountable assessment system, standards of content, curricular system. What's, I think also interesting or important about the question you're raising is sort of, does, does this, does the next iteration of this need to be legislative or does it need to be focused on work happening in schools? The answer to this is probably yes.
Yes.
To both of them. The, and they don't necessarily need to be separated from each other. The legislature has indicated that their priority going forward is going to be the expansion of school choice, a creation of some pathway for charter schools and some pathway for tax credit voucher, private school privatization efforts. We talked to this past summer about that's on the horizon all around the country and diversity of education options is only going to continue to expand. So Kentucky has relied on its state constitution to hold that at bay, that may or may not hold going forward. So I think that's legislating, that's a reality that the Department, Board, the Education District of Kentucky has to come to grips with, is this is a problem that's coming in the same form. So if, if we truly have students at the center, then the question becomes, in a privatized, high school choice educational environment, how do you make sure the experience and students are still prioritized? Because when you just have a free market of education systems, you will get some learner-centered systems, you will get a whole lot that isn't. You'll get the You'll get the whole lot of replication of very traditional models of education that those pressures that market pressure of having a very traditional option that is popular is also going to create a tension on the education system to offer very traditional options to compete in the market. So if, if, if we're putting students at the center of that effort, then in the conversations around how school choice expands, how all these different varieties of school choice expands, a place that I think board can engage with legislature is how do we, how do we support student centered model in a free market competitive system? If that's where they go. So that, that may be helpful on that side. But I think to what Lee was talking about earlier, educating and, and supporting legislators and understanding what are the real goals behind United We Learn. That's something that we haven't been successful with. I think it's an area where a great deal of attention has to be played in. But that said, um, this effort was never contingent upon legislative action. Because what needs to happen is again, at the individual student experience levels, what is the child experiencing in course of learning? You don't need any more money. You don't need any more permission. Um, you don't need a legislative edict or regulation to change them. Don't. Somebody just has to do something different to create a different experience for students. So that's a lot of the support that we've been putting into using our COVID recovery funds into driving that very kind of change. That's got to continue in some form after the COVID money runs out. Cause we got a big cliff coming up on that. And I've been asked, what's the plan for managing that? I'm like, we have $3 billion going into the state. There's no way you don't feel the loss of that. Some of our districts, I was sitting beside someone yesterday who had done an analysis of COVID spending around the country. And she said, you've got some districts in Kentucky that increased their funding levels by 30% in COVID money. There is no replacing 30% loss in none that you don't feel. So anyway, I sort of granted you. I think there is a two step approach. Do you have to move what the legislative path consider in the environment of school choice? How can we still make sure that there's a student centered element to that? And how can we make sure that there's clarity around what United We Learn is really trying to accomplish that has brought bipartisan support? You talk to people about what they want for their kids. When we ask Kentuckians, we didn't ask if they were a Democrat or a Republican about what they want for their children. We asked, what do you want for your children? This is what emerged. So that, that should be something that I think has a, is a major focus going forward. And continuing the work of supporting the shifts that are in practice that are happening in schools every day, that has to happen sometimes.
Really, really helpful. I have a verb from yours too. A verb from yours for me, Jason, was transcend. And I think that I'm becoming more and more enamored of this work as a way for us to transcend whatever the milieu for political landscape in Kentucky in the next decade. This is what we're about as a state board of education as we lead and support a state agency for education. And that can happen, like you said, despite any future legislation that takes us to a different market economy, whatever that might look like. If we continue to be steadfastly purely focused on the needs of Kentucky's children and this kind of system that we know is in their best interest, I think we kind of rise above the the tendency that we often have to, to be sad or upset about things that happen. Instead, we remain kind of persistently focused on this kind of work. And I think that is transcendent. I think it takes us to a new plane as a leadership team. And I know certainly it resonates with my heart when I think about what it is that we're trying to accomplish. And, and, and at the policy level, at state policy level, we are a big tanker trying to to turn and change. And I think we just have to be consistently anchored to this work as we move forward. Joanne.
We are totally centered on the child and that is, that is everyone's goal to make these children reach their full potential. And there is one person who does that and that's their teacher. And I just, when I put myself out in a place that those teachers in the classroom and when they are being inundated in so many directions with what they must do. I want to see us give them support for these goals. And they're in the classroom from eight in the morning to three in the afternoon. And then they have to come up with, with their plans to meet these goals. It's just unsustainable. And until we can do something in our training and support of our teachers, I don't see where we will ever meet these goals.
Yeah. Yeah. When we think about a human centered experience, it's not just the littles. It's, it's got to be humane and just for the adults who make this system work for kids on a day to day basis. I think that's
And our teachers are exhausted. They're emotionally drained. They're experiencing trauma. Uh, the behavior management that they have in their classrooms will drain each of us each day. There's not, there's only so much that they can do. And I'm not saying this is not the path, this is the path. But we've got to give them some support. And right now, they're still, they have that big assessment that they have to do. It's, it's hard to pivot. They want to pivot. But when they have had, when so much has been on that test, it, it's, it's extremely difficult for them. And we talked yesterday about teacher retention. Well, you know, just changing the form on a sick leave is not something that's going to help teacher retention. Like, you know, we have got to, we've got to find some way to support these people. You can be people who we entrust our children to each day. And I don't know how we do that. It is, but I know teaching, the boundaries of teaching have not changed. They're still still so constrained by time and by legislation and by parental expectations and administrative expectations. What Sharon said much more eloquently than I usually say, and we try to jerk people up by the hair if they're it. Sharon said, we need to lift them up, not pull them up. And I just, I want to support those teachers. I want to support those educators. And I think we can find some innovative ways to do that. I don't know. We're some suggestions.
And can I agree with that? I mean, it's, and I, and I know we're going to have the assessment coming up in the next few weeks at our schools. But it's just like there, we know that what was a good school this year can be a poor school next year because we're going to change the cut scores. So how did we have a standard last year that says that you're in blue or yellow? And now this year you're going to be in red because we changed the goalpost. So some of our actions go counter to the conversation that we're having. And that's the reason why, you know, as we go down this, that it's, it's clear to say what we're doing so that when we are changing those goalposts, that we're not out there hurting and criticizing those teachers that, that, that are teaching well, doing what they're doing. And then this year we changed the goalposts. And that's what's hard about this concept. And, and yes, we have this assessment. We're not anti-assessment. We've got to do this. But we have to be clear on our agenda then so that the teachers know when we are changing goalposts, it's for a particular reason. And we're not out there criticizing because we do, no matter what we want to say. I mean, I went on our website and you go on those reports and you start reading a report and you're one of those schools. And, and I mean, all the good work is blasted in this report that you get back. And I know it's meant to help, but the community doesn't necessarily see it that way. I mean, I've been there trying to defend a school. It's demoralizing. And, and for that school, you know, and I use, you know, my own district, but we have one school there. Those teachers were working as hard in that building as anywhere else in the district. But the circumstances they had to overcome was totally different than in another building. Now another building has their own challenges that they have to deal with. So you can't compare the two. But what we do is we try to do that. And that's what is unfortunate because we, we go to a certain model and say, this is the model. And it's not necessarily the model. I mean, we can look across our state and there's some very poor districts that's performing very high and they're reading. But what are, you know, now they developed a system. But if they didn't, if they didn't create their own system, they wouldn't be, it wasn't replicating somebody else's system. That's, that's my concern that, that we try to do sometimes when we go into a district is we try to, when we, when we want to improve them, we're trying to treat them all the same versus listening to what they're doing. And we say, okay, that's good, but this is what we want you to do. Well, then that's demoralizing to the communities when you just spent a year, two years or three years trying to change your system in these. Because you could, I mean, we used to do the OECD test in our district. He's a test to show the example that we could have a school that's performing low on the state accountability, but outperforming international standards. Because we were measuring something different. So how do we, you know, that's, that's going back to, you know, I, I love this graphic. If I first looked at it, I didn't see the child there until after looking at it. That it goes back to, we have to have many different ways of what is assessment in, in, in a district. You know, Boone County High School, when we did the OECD work, outperformed all international countries except for one. It did perform well on a test school. So everybody said in our district, this particular school is lower performing than the others. When in, when in fact, it was an international charm. Anybody would love to have their student there compared to what they were doing because they were focused on these things and not on this. So we have to say that there's other things when we create our agenda and that mindset pipeline. What, how can we hold and look at this as an example? Because all those kids there that performed well on OECD work is, is right there on our next page is our portrait of a graduate. Because that's what they were measuring. They weren't measuring other things. So that's, that's what's difficult. So our actions have to go with, with what we put on paper. So, and you said it very well. I mean, there, there's winners and losers and there's people in this that's going to pick us apart. But if we come up and, you know, if we as a board have our agenda, I have no problem being the person that, that, that they could attack. And if we have it and we know what we're doing because we could validate that, that's what we do. And then every day as a teacher, principal, superintendents or whatever. But if we don't have that, then we could have people throw it down, throw it down to our heads because we don't have it together.
Then we go back to thinking about putting the student at center experience of students. So how we can make that experience meaningful, vibrant, all of the things that young learners have put to that as well. If you start there and you expand out into all of these systems that make education go. The educated workforce is one of the major drivers. And so get them started with the student at the center. What, what is it look like if we teacher training programs, what would it look like if those experiences were given or meaningful, vibrant experiences? What would induction? What would professional learning, what would the, what would the time instructor of this day look like? How would the collaborator with teachers look within the school day? How would the curriculum look? So that's one example. You put students at center, spirals into all of these factors about really, uh, we're interested in maximizing meaningful experience of students. I mean, think about all of these other elements. The same thing's true on assessment or capability systems. It's meaningful, vibrant, rich learning experiences is really what we want. The new algorithms, the measurements of how the capability systems have to change to be superior. All the things that led to time based systems and capability systems and measurements. All those things are still going to be there on the other side. Really put students at center, begs all of these really important questions around how those supporting structures have to change in schools.
Exactly. And Joanne, I think it is at that point when the system does become more humane and teacher working conditions change. Teacher satisfaction goes up. They fall back in love with the reason they went into teaching. And those are really lofty notions, but it really does happen when we get these things right. It's, it's a rebalancing of the system wrapped around the individual learner. And, uh, you know, I think it's a bright future when we think about how we get back to that. You've got to shake off a lot of shackles to get to that.
That's what I was sitting here thinking as you were speaking. Our teachers are accustomed to being handed, this is the hottest new thing. This is the hottest new thing and it blazes and then it burns out and then it's set aside. But here's the hottest new thing. Here's the new hottest new thing. And then you go through five or six more hot things that blaze and burn out. And we go back and we dig up something that's smoldering and we bring it back in. And we do think this is going to work. So they're travel weary from having all, going, jumping through all these hurdles. So just for them to, just to help our teachers understand that the students are what we're focused on. That's why they're there. And that we're not trying to load anything horrible on them. We are trying to get to the point of what an educator is, is going to be our biggest goal for our, for our educators. We are not trying to get you to do more. We are trying to get you to do this. It's going to be a
You're infecting your professional judgment in the process.
Yeah.
Great. All right, friends. Thank you. I chair, oh, no, Dr. Pope, please.
No, I said, okay. No, I, yeah.
So I do cherish these times when we've had these conversations, looking back, I'll look back over these four years and just value everyone and deep thoughtful perspective on these things. I have a suggestion. It's not, uh, it's, it's pretty bureaucratic suggestion, but I would ask the board, because we've got some pages to fill in. Want to capture all of our conversation. A thought that Meredith and I have had that I would like to propose as a possible motion is for the board to approve the creation of some special ad hoc committees to be appointed by the chair from among KBE members, KD staff and interested external partners for the purpose of understanding, supporting and promoting United We Learn through the lens of the inclusive learner experience. And to ask those teams to come together, put some flesh on these bones and be ready to report out to us pretty ambitiously in June, 2023. And would you be interested in such a motion?
I mean.
Thank you, Randy. We have a second. Thank you, Dr. Todd. Uh, any questions about that? Meredith and I have some ideas that we would like, um, in kind of in the spirit of Sharon's comments. United We Learn, we actually had to turn people away from United We Learn who wanted to participate because we had so many people who wanted to engage. So this is a way that we can in fact galvanize communities, reach further into, uh, these will be virtual meetings. They'll have to happen in pretty short order because we don't want to drag out the process of developing our agenda and having it ready for dissemination by early summer. And we have some ideas based on United We Learn interests, based on some conversations with members of the General Assembly who might want to engage as well as some key KD partners whose professional expertise we really need moving forward in this process. So we, um, unless you have further questions, I'll call for a vote on the, that motion. Um, all those in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Ayes.
Opposed, no. Motion carries and we'll keep, uh, we'll keep you posted via email on that as it unfolds. If you have interest in serving on, uh, any Motion carries and we'll keep, uh, we'll keep you posted via email on that as it unfolds. If you have interest in serving on, uh, any of these, uh, call to action areas, uh, just let Meredith know. All right. Excellent. Um, kind of close to on time. Uh, we'll turn now to our, is Dr. Thompson here? Yay. Our dear friend, Erin Thompson. There's your, you have a four foot head right over my left shoulder. Don't let that intimidate you at all.
Madam Chair, I would have a four foot head if I was sitting next to you, you know, so, uh, good to see everybody. Uh, it's, it's good to give my report today. I wished I was there in person. I thought I was going to be, but ended up having to do multiple things today as I do every day. As you all know, six years ago or so, when we took over higher ed, our goal was to transform higher ed for the future of Kentucky. One of the things that we did at that time was set a attainment goal, which is having 60% of our citizens of working age to have a, uh, credential, a post-secondary credential that matters, by the way. That's not any post-secondary credential. One that matters, uh, by 2030. Uh, got some news to report on that here in a second. But as you also know, we went around the state of Kentucky and talked to about 3,000 people in P-12 higher ed business leaders. Uh, whomever would talk to his parents, asking them why higher education mattered or didn't matter in their lives. As you all know, that was our value propositional statement, uh, trying to put, uh, value back in the proposition that higher education matters. Because so we've been hit from all sides, all kinds of people, those who are even educated, telling us that higher education doesn't matter anymore. So our goal was to really produce data, but build on that data with good analytics, uh, both in predictive analytics as well as prescriptive analytics. In other words, take our knowledge that we've gained and the data that we have and turn it into good policy. And make a long story short, we've done that over the last many years. We also reorganized, as you all know, CPE to focus on what we thought was the future where we needed to go. That we built a workforce, business partnership, part of, uh, CPE, bringing employers in on the front end, which gives us that quality element. And we also build our P-20, uh, uh, group, as you all are familiar with, with Amanda Ellis and the group. The item that we wanted to make sure that we did was create a systematic approach, uh, to understanding where we needed to go. In other words, that we no longer talked about college and career, we talked about career with college as the intervening variable. That no one really came to college that didn't want to have some career that mattered in the end. We also looked at how the salaries of these folks, we have a great data system, best in the nation. We can really look at a triangulation of all kinds of data to report how well, uh, students who got a credential are doing afterwards. Uh, even health data and a variety of other things. Uh, once again, I'll get to the end here in a second to give you some numbers and I'll tell you some of the other things that we're doing now to move forward. Uh, but the item that I wanted to really stress after hearing the conversation over the last hour or so, that our goal was to really shape this around the student. It was, it was, it was our goal to really focus on high quality credentials with equity at the center. Creating a way that students could get into the pipeline and finish at a low cost affordability. Focusing on student success and a variety of other things. And now Lee would, uh, understand what I'm saying here. Proud to say that most, all of our four-year institutions now are at a, an 80% retention rate, except for one of our institutions. Um, our KCTCS system has increased their retention tremendously. Graduation rates are up. Uh, right now are close to average. We used to talk about the six-year graduation mark. Uh, now we're at about a 4.1, 4.2, but people coming in to get a four-year degree. But all of those are positives, but we're also closing gaps as fast or faster than almost every other state. We just got our data back from the National Student Clearinghouse. We're now number two in the country in completion. Uh, that makes me happy. We're also, we also knew to get to where we needed to go. We had to average about a 1.7% increase in our attainment per year to get to 60 by 30 when we started this. We have done more than that. To make a long story short, we're now at a 54.3% attainment toward that 60% goal. There's a lot we still have to do. Uh, we, as you all know, we created the graduate profile. Now all of our institutions, both four and two-year are involved in building a curriculum uh, as well as pedagogical techniques that move toward putting those 10 essential employability skills as a part of what we do to the thread of what we do. In other words, the pedagogy as well as the curriculum and those skills you already know about, I'm going great detail, problem solving, critical thinking, cultural competency and so on. So we've now started to incorporate that at a deep level with, uh, recognizing our employers as well as our students can know that they've got the both technical skills as well as those employability skills that are in place. Along the way, we've done some good stuff and I won't go over a great detail, but the latest items you probably have seen already. That are Kentucky Advising Academy, which we're working with our P-12 partners. Uh, launched a first of its kind resource for post-secondary advisors. The College and Career Advising Toolkit, Kit, which is a comprehensive collection of tools, information and resources, which will serve as a hub for advisors across the Commonwealth. Uh, you know, the data section provides advisor with advisors with timely statewide data on basically everything from fast foot completion rates to school academic performance as well as dual credit statistics. We also created our college and career pathways, uh, which, uh, we, we, we came out on a big launch. Kentucky is working with partners like the Kentucky Department of, I mean, CPE, like the Kentucky Department of Education, Commerce, Lexington, Kentucky Anna Works, uh, Kentucky Center for Statistics, Chamber of Commerce, our Community and Technical College, Labor Cabinet Fed Schools, Jefferson County Schools and so on. Uh, to advance CT, uh, and a VARET CT and some other items to really get students to that place where they understand they have a post-secondary credential that matters. We also, our third round of, uh, uh, Summer Bridge money went out. Uh, we gave out another 1.2 million. Uh, as you probably have heard, data are really coming back showing great success for many of the students that were coming into post-secondary and may not, would have gone into post-secondary because of, uh, not being ready. We've worked with and partnerships with our P-12 as well as our post-secondary institutions and really getting these young folk ready to go in to college, both academically, socially, emotionally and culturally. Uh, we named the new Aldi cohort to make a long story short, uh, each year my office, uh, pulls together a group of promising, uh, people of color who wants to go into administration. Uh, we are in dirk, as you all know, so we thought the best way to do that is provide them with a year-long leadership, uh, opportunity to learn how to maneuver those grounds in post-secondary to move, uh, throughout post-secondary and higher administrative positions. And we're really happy with, uh, we've done this now many years in the last five years, I think, six years. And we've had a lot of great success with student, I mean, with, uh, these, uh, post-secondary faculty and staff members that have gone into administration. Uh, Eric, just so much to talk about. I won't take up your time because I know you're a little bit behind, but I do want to say that we have a new dual credit policy out. I know you all are very anxious to know about that. It's really a great policy that we are the first state to set an attainment, uh, uh, percent for our dual credit. Those that are graduating from high school to have a dual credit, uh, uh, experience, if you will, we put it to 50%. We're also doubling down on really building, uh, that pipeline with people of color. But that's not going into it as fast as we want to. Our low income students, that's not going into it as fast as we would like to see them to go into it. You know, the data, we were the first state to be able to really measure how well those that have had a dual credit experience, how well they've done in college. And in fact, they do really well. And we found out that our students of color actually outperformed everybody else if they had a dual credit experience. So these are all the things that we are fully, uh, engaged in doing to make sure we give those students a transforming experience. Uh, you, you probably, uh, hear a lot of what we're doing on social media. I'm a big data guy, as you well know. But you also probably have heard our podcast that we talk about it. Uh, we've been going around the nation and, and the state, once again, doing our tours. We call this a conversation this time instead of a listening tour. I'm talking more than I'm listening, I guess, in that regard. Uh, but it is about reporting how well we've done since we went out and talked with them many years ago. And once again, we're bringing this now, what we call to the local, to the regional level. Talking to the local business leaders and governmental leaders and other folks to see how we can bring our P-12 post-secondary and our business and industry to build the economy of those regional, uh, group, I mean, those regional areas. So we will be doing a lot more of this, uh, Madam Chair. Uh, there's a lot more to talk about. Uh, but I'm going to have to go to another meeting soon, but I wanted to make sure we save enough time for me to answer any questions that I may be able to answer.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Dr. Thompson. I'll just, uh, just a, a compliment, not a question. Uh, I love the resonance that I hear between the work that you were doing in higher ed and the work that we're working on in P-12. And I just appreciate the partnership that you and Dr. Glass have to, to find ways to make that stream seamlessness and resonance happen in, um, our two worlds, which should be one big world. So thank you for that. Uh, or questions for Dr. Thompson?
I don't know more of his pin.
Oh, oh, Randy has a higher end pin on his lapel.
That's what I appreciate about Randy.
He's going for 18 points, I think, so.
Well, there was two other things I wanted to tell you before I got off. I want to make sure I save time for questions. You probably know that SDR 98, the resolution that starts me with looking at placing a four-year institution in southeastern Kentucky. Look at transforming the system of KCTCS and whether or not we should have a bigger system for all of higher education in the state. Leave their calling as post-secondary form 2.0, uh, to make a long story short. Couple of things I have to say, we have to December 1 to do this. So please wish me luck and send me money. Uh, the other, other thing that, uh, we're doing, we are now in our third edition of performance funding, relooking at that. What we can do, what we, uh, need to do to transform that into, uh, a more, what I call stable model for the future. It has shown to have good, uh, outcomes in certain areas, some areas not so much. We'll look at all of that. But you know, I have all the presidents of our, uh, public institutions as well as the governor's office and, and leadership of the House and the Senate with us as we go through this transformational process. So, uh, wish me luck on that. That's, uh, that's something we'll have to have done toward the end of the year. Uh, as you all know, on tuition, uh, I stated fairly clearly, my job was to make sure that our campuses could operate, but make sure we keep our tuition low for our students and our families. And in the past many years, we've averaged a 1.4, 1.1.3 actually, percent increase, which was significantly below the, uh, inflation mark. Our inflation has gone up significantly, uh, over the last few years, as you all know. Uh, and but we still, once again, we set our markers. Uh, not all of our campuses will go to this limit, but we set a 5% over two years. Uh, so it will also be low again for the next two years. Uh, they can't get over 5% within those two years. As most they can take is 3% in one year, uh, which is once again, another five percentage points below inflation. Uh, but, uh, our goal once is to keep it low, but our campuses are trying to figure out how to give raises to our faculty and staff. So it's really a delicate balance, but I think we've been able to reach one that is reasonable. And once again, focusing on the cost of education. Uh, so Madam Chair, that's really all I have. I promise you, uh, and happy to take any questions once again.
Dr. Poe has a question. I would also offer the services of Dr. Lee Todd on your, um, charge between now and December. He's got a T-shirt on that says, been there, done that.
Yeah, Dr. Thompson, one of the, I, you know, thank you for that thorough report there, uh, on this 2.0. Some of the things that I heard yesterday and, and a little bit concerning, I guess, just want to make sure that this is there, that uh, as we're moving forward, that our community and technical colleges have been tremendous in helping us achieve and accomplish that goal of increasing degrees and especially degrees that are very meaningful. So I hope that in this 2.0, that some of the things that I've heard that potentially that they may not be able to offer general ed classes and things like that moving forward. But we don't want to relegate them back to just a technical college. Or many of our districts and our superintendents have greater relationships, even with our community technical colleges than we do with our four-year universities. Because they're not necessarily always in that back park. So I just will make sure that, you know, from the voices of, of, in the field, that if we have that communication with, uh, district superintendents and, and, uh, those districts moving forward. The value of the community technical college that has grown this particular state and workforce solutions and the opportunity for dual credit and the opportunity for two plus two programs. I know you listened to that, but I just wanted to be on record of, you know, representing them or representing the at-large community that I have in K-12 as a representative of this board. The critical nature of those conversations with the superintendents and offering dual credit through our community technical colleges. And what has occurred there has been tremendous for this state and I don't want to see it go bad.
I, I hear you, Dr. Poe, and I appreciate that. And I've heard this now from many, many superintendents, uh, by the way. Uh, and I appreciate those inputs. As you all know, we're going to do an unbiased study. We're going to, there's no conclusions made. I will say this, I've seen the power of, of, uh, the systematic approach and accomplishing what we've accomplished. Especially if you look at our numbers, and I didn't go over all these numbers today. If I did, it would probably take the rest of the day. But we, we've got some magnificent numbers that are coming out showing this. Some areas where, uh, we have to start worrying about even more. Uh, as Dr. Glass and I talk about all the time, we've got to get our college going rate up. And our community colleges are the best way to think about that in many ways. Uh, we're at still that 47.8% of those graduating from high school going to college. And we've done a deep analytical data. Not all of those are working, making $20 an hour, just to let you know if you hear that. Uh, that's not the case. Uh, and many of that are working sooner or later, we'll have to get Randy that post-secondary credential to actually help them to move up. So college is needed by 90% of our folks in this state, one way or the other. It may not be a two-year degree. It may be a workforce certificate, but it's needed. And our, our adult learners, we've got to focus on that. So there's a lot of other stuff we have to focus on. Uh, Lee, I have more than just looking at this, this, uh, SDR 98. We will focus on that. And Randy, I promise you, we will listen to everybody and we're going to hopefully be able to get someone to come in who's unbiased, if you will, to be able to listen to everybody. So you all have another chance to actually input what you think from P-12. Uh, those things we should look like in post-secondary to get us where we're going.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Thompson. Dash off to your next very important meeting.
Well, nothing more important than you all, by the way, uh, but you know, and just know that Amanda, I'll give her a shout out that who's been representing for now a long time, but we can no longer represent with her, but she still will be in tune. Will be listening and she's far smarter than I am, I promise you. So if there's anything that we can address, please holler at us either through me or through Amanda and we'll be more than happy, uh, to do those.
She has a seat at the family table anytime she wants to be here. We'll make sure she knows that. Thank you. All right. At this time, we'll turn to Secretary Jamie Link for a report from the cabinet.
Good morning, Madam Secretary or Madam, uh, Chair, Commissioner Glass, members of the board. I'm happy to be with you. I'm sorry I can't be there in person. Uh, like Dr. Thompson, uh, I have other commitments, uh, kind of stacked up today, but I am glad to be here and look forward to to future meetings. I think there's a lot of commonality in Dr. Thompson's comments as well as as mine. And certainly from the Education and Labor Cabinet, you know, a little over nine months, we merged the Kentucky Labor Cabinet and the Education and Workforce Development Cabinet. And that really broadened the scope of this cabinet, not only from the traditional labor functions of of workplace safety, worker's compensation, unemployment insurance, but also brought in the the whole realm of workforce development and a lot of our attached education agencies. So the transition has gone, I believe, very well. A few little bumps, but nothing major by any means. And so we're starting to settle in. And as Brian Perry mentioned yesterday in his report, I think we and all state agencies are are collecting our thoughts from the twenty twenty-three General Assembly. We were not heavily impacted by this General Assembly, knocking on wood. One bill did help with unemployment insurance by extending benefits from twelve weeks to sixteen weeks. Other than some other not so positive moves from last bill, last year's House Bill four, but, you know, we're trying to make the best of it and continue to make improvements with that. And also out of this General Assembly, the General Assembly had decided to move the Office of Disability Determination Services from the Cabinet for Health and Family Services to the Education and Labor Cabinet effective July one of next year of twenty twenty-four. So that will bring our cabinet up to about two thousand employees. And that does not account for the the staffing at the Kentucky Department of Education as a an administratively attached agency to this cabinet. Like KDE, we are I'm hoping to still be here in January of twenty twenty-four. And regardless of that, we are starting immediately to work on our legislative agenda for the next General Assembly because it will be here before we know it. And certainly being a budget session that makes this this upcoming session even more important as we look for the necessary resources we'll need for the upcoming biennium. And to also further our workforce development opportunities. You know, it's it's kind of the core mission now of this cabinet is is getting people into a good career. And that's what we primarily focus our efforts on, notwithstanding all the other traditional functions that this cabinet has played. I would like to say that even though we're we're attached administratively on paper to the Department of Education, I really value the the support and the partnership that we have with Commissioner Glass and and the whole team at KDE. My niece is a fourth grade teacher in Anderson County. So this is a very important subject to me personally. But professionally, I think our connection is especially important when it comes to career and technical education. We work with Dr. Hargis and and other members of that team and hope to improve and expand that partnership going forward. I've had the opportunity to visit several ATCs and CTCs across the state. And my experience has been phenomenal. The intelligence, the the professionalism, the drive that that the students have has been really inspiring, and we want to help assist with that in any way we possibly can from the cabinet's perspective. And again, working in close, close collaboration and partnership with the department. Many of you may know about the Everybody Counts program, which was the governor's brainchild that we piloted in Jefferson County last school year and and had had good success with that program. As with any pilot program, you know, now we look to really get our legs under us and get that moving and expanding. So not only are we working with Jefferson County for this school year, we're also working with Shelby, Franklin, Scott, and Fayette Counties as well. So a little late in the year, so the expectation isn't overly important right now. I think we're just trying to get established. And as with any new program, it it may take two or three or more years to really get it seeded and and get it really working to its full potential. But we're glad to get that started. And in fact, in some of my travels across the state at different workforce events and things, talking with school superintendents and other school officials. When I talk about Everybody Counts, there there's great interest at the local level. And ultimately, our goal would be to develop a playbook that local districts or regional approaches could be utilized to to partner the school systems, the educators with the employer community. And and, you know, the Education and Labor Cabinet and our folks don't have to be there to hold hands and and lead the effort that it would become become an organic program. And quite frankly, I think that's already in place in many places across the state where the school systems are already working with their their local and regional employer. So we just want to expand that and grow that to the greatest extent possible. I would also like to maybe go back to the General Assembly for just one second and and express my appreciation to Commissioner Glass for his leadership during what was a very challenging session. And unfortunately, it seems like every General Assembly session is now very challenging, but I didn't want to commend the commissioner and and all of the KDE staff for the way they manage this session and for the 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 leadership that you you showed during that. Moving on, obviously, I said workforce development is is our primary focus right now. Essentially, there are two jobs for every eligible Kentucky worker right now in the Commonwealth. So we are looking at every avenue to get Kentucky workers, identify the workers that are not in the workforce, identify the reasons why they're not in the workforce, and then how can we help them get in the workforce? We are convening a group from the Education and Labor Cabinet, the Council on Post-Secondary Education, the Cabinet for Economic Development, KCTCS, the Kentucky Chamber and the Chamber Foundation. We want to include KDE and CTE and also looking at any other cabinet or agency in state government that plays a role in workforce development and how can we not only be a a resource for workforce development, but how can we as an employer be a partner in workforce development and providing good careers to the people of the Commonwealth, Commonwealth? And then we're we're working on a comprehensive strategy. You know, there's a lot of workforce development strategies, it seems, in the state. Dr. Thompson, his team have a great program. KCTCS has a great program. The Kentucky Chamber has their talent pipeline management. Obviously, our cabinet has workforce development initiatives. And I just want to make sure that we are all in sync with one another, especially when it comes to the employer communities, that we're not out having different representatives of of our agencies talking to an employer about workforce development. And then a few weeks later, another representative from another agency trying to get an appointment with that same employer to talk about workforce development. I think we need to be more synchronized in our efforts and communicating with one another. And basically maximizing our resources across the state to have the greatest impact possible when it comes to working with the employer community. And we're also, of course, working with with those that are seeking work. What training do they need? What education do they need? What introductions do they need that we can help marry that worker with a an employer who's looking for the skills that that worker may have or the the skills that we can help that worker attain? Then, of course, working with the the schools, not only P through twelve, but also in post-secondary. And also looking at apprenticeship and and other skilled trades, training programs through through labor unions and other organizations to provide pathways for Kentucky citizens to find good employment going forward. We're also really taking a hard look and making great efforts and looking at the veteran population for transitioning service members who are coming out of not only Kentucky military installations, but from installations across the country and recruiting veterans to come to Kentucky or stay in Kentucky with their spouse and their family for the many job opportunities we have in this state, as well as the quality of life here, the cost of living, and and just the whole package of why Kentucky is a great place to come live and to work. We're also working with the reentry and second chance populations for criminal justice and substance abuse victims who are looking to take that next step and get on the right path. And and how can we help them do that? Additionally, looking at vocational rehabilitation for people with disabilities, as well as immigration and refugee employment. Kentucky has a significant population of refugees who have come to this country and come to this state. And how can we help them get into, get the training they need or or determine the training they have had? And then to get them into quality employment here in the Commonwealth. Very quickly, we have, our cabinet is also working on digital equity and accessibility with the Governor's Office of Broadband. You know, I previously spent some time working on the Kentucky Wired Project. So you know, Kentucky has made great effort and made great investment in building up the digital infrastructure across the Commonwealth. So we built the middle mile Kentucky Wired network. Now we need to to build build out the the final mile or the last mile and get broadband services to the premises, to the business, to the home for education purposes, for career training, for job placement, for remote, remote work for for that matter. Certainly, in many areas of our Commonwealth, the physical job opportunities are very diverse in the urban areas versus the rural areas. And remote work, we believe, is a a tool that we can use to help improve the employment picture in areas of the state that don't have the the businesses to provide the job opportunities like other areas of the state. As I mentioned, the cabinet as well focuses on the traditional labor cabinet functions of of occupational safety and health, worker's compensation if a worker is injured on the job and getting them back to work as quickly as possible so that they're not missing that income and that employer doesn't have to find someone else to fill that job. And then, of course, unemployment insurance benefits. We've heard a lot about unemployment insurance over the last three years. I'm glad to report that just last month or at the end of February, actually, our unemployment insurance team cleared the what was two point eight million unemployment insurance claims during the pandemic. We finally cleared that that backlog of claims, and that was quite an accomplishment. And then in the upcoming session regarding unemployment insurance, we're also working with some members of the General Assembly on extending unemployment insurance benefits to victims of domestic violence who can't go to work because of domestic violence-related issues. So that's, we feel that's very important, obviously, and we want to do all we can to make that a reality come twenty twenty-four. And then lastly, communications, we're really taking a a strong look at our communications strategy and our program. We want to put an emphasis on better communications with citizens of the Commonwealth to make them more aware of the services that are available to them through our cabinet, through state government, from early childhood to adult education to worker safety and support. Obviously, the governor's scholars to the School for Entrepreneurs, assistance for Kentuckians with disabilities, the refugee and immigration population that I mentioned. We're also collaborating with Dolly Parton on a statewide imagination library that you probably read about. And then, of course, we're we're very proud of the organizations, in particular, a couple of national nationally recognized agencies like KET and as Dr. Thompson mentioned, KY Stats or the Kentucky Center for Statistics. Places I've gone, when they know I'm from Kentucky, they talk about how how impressive those two agencies are among several of our agencies. So we we have a great cabinet, we have a great staff. We we look forward to working with and and supporting the the Department of Education any way we can. Because I think ultimately our goal, again, as Dr. Thompson mentioned, is getting people into a good career and and a long a long career, a long and successful career. So we take that very personally. We take that very professionally. And our job is to help these, help people support themselves and their families and their communities, and that's what we're driven to do. And I think working with the department and this board, we can see some some real movement in a positive direction. So with that, I'll conclude my comments, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Secretary Link. Once again, I'm just reminded by that the work that you do along with President Thompson and Commissioner Glass is so important, and it provides kind of a three-stranded opportunity for us to brave together all of these initiatives. And I I think it's really powerful, just in your report today, that we are all headed in that same direction. I know everybody at this table supports that notion that the ultimate outcome for all of our P twelve learners is that they would be, make good post-secondary decisions and move into a workforce environment where they are happy for throughout their lives. So thank you for that. Board members, do you have questions for Secretary Link? Oh, yeah, Dr. Robinson.
So Secretary, thanks so much for that report. As you well know, we are continuing to experience dire shortage shortages in the area of the education workforce and some of our initiatives, and we'll be talking more about getting ready for the next session of the General Assembly. I was wondering if the cabinet really can help support us and put a shoulder to the wheel of this because it's going to take I think it's going to take us all from the local level to the cabinet level to the General Assembly to really help folks understand the dimensions of the education workforce churn, including perhaps, perhaps building additional infrastructure so that we are better informed and documented, we were strategic in our approaches and our approach to this going forward.
I couldn't agree more. I think obviously, we we try to keep our finger on the pulse and and the the job needs across the Commonwealth, but particularly in the education space, as well as I would mention, the healthcare space as well. There's a, there's a critical need for that. So I'm not the smallest fellow in the world, and I'm I'm willing to put my shoulder to the wheel and push as as hard as I can. And I can, I can definitely tell you that the governor is fully supportive of this cabinet's efforts. I feel like when I go into a cabinet meeting anymore, he spends about seventy-five percent of the time talking about workforce needs. So the governor is very in tune with workforce development and the 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 supply and demand issues that we face with workforce. Again, we're we're looking at ways that we can help supplement the education talent needs. You know, obviously, through traditional education and training, but also are there apprenticeship opportunities that we could look at for helping fill the the demand for education professionals? The same is true in the healthcare space as well. So you you have our commitment for sure that this cabinet and this administration are working to help address those needs. And and again, I'll go back to my comment about I I truly value the partnership that that this cabinet has with has with, with the Department of Education. I think it's, it's going to be a vital tool for addressing these workforce needs that we have going forward and forming that comprehensive plan. I believe Lieutenant Governor, who was representing the cabinet before and the General Assembly elected not to allow that to continue, but, you know, her term was cradled to career. So, how can we have that comprehensive plan, working with all of you, to form that strategy and to have that successful conclusion of getting that person into a good career for the rest of their life?
Well, it's certainly going to take the triumph represented here, the Department of Education, CPE, and the cabinet to help guide the positive deliberations on this matter. So, I hope that we'll remain arms linked and shoulders employed as we get ready for this next session. Thank you, Secretary.
Absolutely. And I'll also include too that Secretary Jeff Knoll and I, Secretary of the Cabinet for Economic Development and I are really working to form a tighter bond between our two cabinets because economic development and workforce development go hand in glove and one doesn't work without the other. And as a matter of fact, economic development is now including some of our professionals with their recruitment efforts when they're talking to clients who are looking to locate or expand in Kentucky, but they have technical questions about workplace safety or other things that this cabinet deals with. We can help assist them with subject matter experts who can help that company better understand the climate and the environment in Kentucky so that we can better, we can see more success in that, that economic development recruitment.
Excellent. Thank you. Well, we certainly appreciate all of your time, Secretary Ling, and especially your report today, very energizing. So, thanks again for being here.
My pleasure. Thanks for having me.
At this time, we'll turn it over to the Commissioner's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Secretary. I had a chance to go to the CCSO event on modernizing education today. It was a wonderful small group discussion. They were about ten of us around the table with an audience also listening in, talking about the same challenges and goals that we really had in the discussion, the board's future plans and United Learning as well. So, nationally, there's a lot of interest in some conversation and how we do this and what's the way, numbers that we need to pull and focus on. So, Kentucky is absolutely at the forefront of that conversation, much to do with the work that educators in state, Blue and UK negative program. I have believed that for many times, for many years, so to just tell that it's being noted. I did, in the course of that, just reflect on that there is a great deal of interest right now in science of reading literacy programs. And of course, that's been something that we raise leadership, we, we, here in Kentucky as well, but it's, it's something that's really caught fire around the country and seems to be showing strong results in terms of changes and outcomes and achievements and achievement gap issues around the country. It's a welcome change after many years of state level or federal that happened, that to a lot of changes, a lot of positive difference. So, it's, it is affirming to see something that appears to be gaining support from different political spectrums. There were red states, blue states, all at the table that were all interested in bringing this literacy, these literacy efforts forward. One of the things that occurred to me is we've poured so much energy and time into variety of different reform efforts, federal and state levels. Why is this one working? And I think the answer to it is that it is, at last, a reform effort that focuses on the experience of student. It is, it goes straight to what is the student, what is the cognitive work that a student is doing and how does the student engage with text and, and build literacy skills? So, at last, it feels like it's the right focus. You go back to that element of student at the center, student-centered approach. Last, we seem to have a national movement on something that is aimed at the right place. So, I hope we get into more of that as it goes forward. I don't know if that's why it's working or not, but I suspect that it is, at last, it's something that's focusing right on us. I do, I did provide a report to you ahead of the program, so you can read the entirety of that, but I will update you on a couple of other things. The state-operated ATCs are continuing relevant and rigorous career and technical instruction of over 16,000 students in the state. Amtech, a large electrical contractor with a certified apprentice program, visited Lee County ATC on March 17th, and two former ATC students and current employees of Amtech, I have to be careful not to say Amtrak, as Amtech spoke with current students regarding high demand, high wage, electrical careers. Thanks to Amtech for giving our students access to that great opportunity. Students in the auto voting program were joined by officials from Montgomery, Menifee, and Matt County Schools, proposed helping to complete or repair a vehicle donated by the city of Mount Sterling, who were used by the school. Our students got valuable hands-on experience as they repaired out of service police. I wonder what the school system is going to do with that. I got to see that scene. The congratulations to Kentucky School for the Blind Cheerleaders, who won first place in the 2223 North Central Association of Schools for the Blind Wrestling and Cheer Conference in January, in partnership with the American Printing House for the Blind. Eighteen students from across the Commonwealth participated in the Kentucky Braille Challenge. Eight KSB students participated with two of the students placing second and two placing first in their respective levels. Another exciting news, KSB has started the first ever bowling team with 17 students participating. And I think Dr. Todd's a big bowler, is that right?
No.
Like bow on the table. So, cool start. The Danville Arts Commission sponsored an art event for area students at the Kentucky School for the Deaf. Alex Brailer, a senior at KSB, had his artwork displayed at the Danville City Hall during the month of January. KSB will be hosting the 27th Gallaudet East Regional and Academic Bowl, March 9th, through, or hosted, that with eight teams from across the nation. The school held a mock match between our academic team and staff. It was quite competitive. We're so honored to host this special event during the 200th anniversary year. KSB was invited by Senator Douglas to come present for the celebration of the bicentennial with a resolution to mark April as Deaf Education Month in Kentucky. Governor Vassier and President Steinberg welcomed our students and staff to have pictures in their offices and the attendance. It was a very special day for the students. Lastly, KSB celebrated Read Across America with traditional breakfast with green eggs and ham, Silly Stock Day, and many, many Dr. Seuss books. I did prepare green eggs for my kids, one that they would not eat. Madam Chair, this concludes my summary. You may leave.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Commissioner. Especially love hearing those updates about the ATC, KSB, and KSD. And KSD is celebrating their 200th anniversary this weekend with a big gala. Looking forward to attending that. So, thank you. I also want to just take a moment, personal privilege, to thank you in keeping and echoing what Secretary Ling said about your work through the legislative session. We appreciate you. I've had a chance to share on an individual basis with you, but thank you again for your leadership through what was an extremely trying session. You took a principled stance and you led through those difficult times stoically and we appreciate you so much for that. I think Mickey, no, no, so first with Todd. Come on up. You have in your portal an update from Todd on the Hearing Officer's Report. So, again, a great document to help us kind of follow along on the timelines of those regulations we've been working on. Sometimes I forget it's been so long in the process where we are. So, Todd, those are much appreciated. And the statement of consideration before you today is for 704K AR8, column 060. And with us are Chief Equity Officer, Associate Commissioner Thomas Woods Tucker, Chief Academic Officer Mickey Ray. I know you have other team members, probably for a different presentation. I'll turn it over to you.
Chair Young, the department did receive two comments in response to 704KR8060, which is the academic standards for social studies. That triggers a statement of consideration that's in your board report, that's a draft document that the department and staff have drafted for your review and recommended for your approval. You will see that as a result of the two comments received, we are recommending that no changes be made at this time. I'll turn it over to Dr. Woods Tucker, to Mickey, to answer any further questions.
We would do say that the comments were out of the scope of CARES 158196, which was why we had to open the social studies standards before they were on track to be fully reviewed in 2025. So, those two commenters, what they have shared, that they are valid concerns, but because they are out of scope, we are declining to amend the regulation at this time, but they will absolutely be shared with the advisory panels and review committee when the social studies standards do come up for that full review.
Okay.
And they do come in, were given, as well as any community members and state will be interested in a response to very detailed responses that has, Mickey just stated, or Chief Academic Officer stated, maybe, so they're out of scope, but they really solid inquiries and I, again, appreciate the responses. This is the cabinet, but I'm sure, see people all the time, relative, asking the question relative to where we are with the 24 doctors being put into the middle school, high school social studies staff, are on target to do that as well. And then another question I had last week, I was with former Doug Ward and Mary State, and their questions about the, and our team, our program standards, Chief Academic Officer, and everyone else, team, certainly, comments and sort of responding comments people have in regards to the standards as related to social studies and the laws that is enacted.
Excellent. Thank you so much for the openness to those communications into your thorough consideration of the response. I'm happy when the committee engages around some specific details around social studies like they did. So, that's really, really good, helpful feedback. You guys have questions for the team? Right here, none. I would entertain a motion to approve the statement of consideration for 704K AR8, 060, relating to the Kentucky academic standards for social studies. Do we have such a motion? Thank you, Ms. Adams. We have a second. Thank you, Dr. Robinson. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you so much. Next to the table, we have our team from the United We Learn Council and the CGSA Grant. Along with them are co-chairs Sarah Hatten and Kathy Stovall, and this is the Committee on Accelerating Innovation. So, we are delighted that you are all here this morning. Find a spot for Kathy. Thank you. And I'll turn it over to Chief Performance Officer Karen Dodd.
Morning and good morning, everyone. So, yes, I'm very pleased to have Dr. Hatten and Dr. Stovall joining us today. I will be pretty brief and let them do most of the talking today.
In a minute. Let me first go here. Not that brief, sorry. So, first of all, the purpose, as you all know, of this committee is really to bring together as many stakeholders as possible. We have about 75 members on the United We Learn Council, and the purpose is to have them recommend to the board, to KDE, any policies or practices that they think should be coming forward that are in the best interest of our student. So, like I said, there's approximately 75 members. We meet twice a year. The kickoff meeting was in November and we are meeting again in just a couple weeks. We have Audrey Gilbert as the interim chair, and we are in the process of electing a new chair and vice chair for the council. The three committees are the Vibrant Learning Experiences, the Accelerating Innovation, and Bold New Future Committees. All of these committees met, have been meeting monthly, and the Vibrant Learning Experiences met on March 6th. All of them talked about the upcoming election. The Vibrant Learning Experiences also discussed, they really wanted to look at what's happening in the state when it comes to these vibrant learning experiences. So, what does that look like? And so, they've done a couple of site visits, one to Eminence, one to Marshall County. Both of those took place at the end of April. They also wanted to see what's going on across the state, and so they brought in a representative from the Canopy Project, and they have a database that basically is collecting all kinds of innovation, innovative things that are happening in schools. So, they've been taking a look at that too as well. The Bold New Future Committee met on March 7th. That's led by Caleb Bates, and they, they talked about the grant and the deliverables that are in the grant for their particular committee. They also really wanted to dive into the themes that came out of the United We Learn Report. So, there's 10 themes and how do those relate to what we boil down to the three big ideas? So, they've been having a lot of discussions around those ideas, and Dr. Glass will be coming in, in April to the convening to really help them understand how all of that has taken place and how we've gotten to where we are. So, all three of these committees, I talked about two, I'm going to turn it over to these ladies in just a moment, and they're going to talk about accelerating innovation. They did meet on March 8th, but now they're going to go through and let you know what they've kind of been doing over the last five months or so since we had our kickoff in November.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioner Latt, first of all, I'm here at Hatten. I'm the Director for Secondary Instruction for Adirac County Schools, and I'm excited to be here talking about the amazing work that this committee has done with Dr. Stovall and myself. And you'll switch to the next slide, please, Meredith. I'm not going to go into that. That is my issue about myself, but this is my 22nd year in education. I've taught everything from kindergarten all the way to eighth grade, and then I've been a school administrator for the last eight years. My primary purpose for applying to be on the Kentucky United We Learn Council was that I was really vested in making sure that every child in our Commonwealth had the same educational opportunities. And this is personal. My oldest son is profoundly deaf, and has had a pretty different learning experience from school, goes with his siblings. And so, when I started looking at the work that the state was doing, I, I knew this was where I needed to be. So, I was pleased to be elected as chair of this committee and to be leading this discussion around changing the innovation and the accountability system for all citizens in the Commonwealth. But, Dr. Stovall, talk about it.
Madam Chair, Dr. Young, Dr. Glass. It is a pleasure to be here and too excited about the work that we have been doing with accelerating, in terms of accelerating innovation. My background, to me, is not important compared to my love for children and the passion I have for education. I truly believe that the work that we're doing will make a difference. And, Dr. Glass, I have to comment on the thing about the literacy. I do think that that is what's pushing people forward. My background is in literacy, and I, I had a child that struggled with literacy, and her brothers, this is my youngest, and her brothers would tease me, "Mom, you teach literacy? You can't teach your own child how to read." You know, so, you know, I know what it feels like. And so, my experience has been creating an environment for children that really does make a difference for them for the future, and that they believe in themselves and that there are many possibilities that are out there. It's, we just present those possibilities for them. So, I enjoy, love education. I think it's just, it's just one of those things, you know, I never realized until recently. People ask me, "What do you want to be when you grow up?" And I never really had a true answer for it, and now that I am who I am, I want to be an athlete. And now that I am who I am, I want to be an educator. I want to be an advocate for education. And that's what I've been doing all my life, but now I really know deep in my heart. So that's what really needs to happen for young people.
So our committee has 21 members and we're a pretty diverse group. We've got nine members of the committee representing different factors, different organizations. We have 15 educators, which includes myself. We have eight representatives for family. And then we have two students that are on our committee as well. We're also pleased to work under the direction of Dr. Jennifer Stafford here with KDE and the Lions Assessment and the NCIA Group as well, leading some of the work with Dr. Stovall and myself. Our purpose primarily is to focus on changing, looking at changes in the assessment and accountability system. And we've done a lot of research into different assessment and accountability systems over the last five months, both inside and outside of Kentucky. We're not looking so much at the vibrant learning experiences that are going on in the classrooms, nor are we looking so much at building a bold new future with the legislative changes, because that is the work of the two other subcommittees. But we have been starting to have some cross-committee discussions. And we're looking forward to having more of that deliberate discussion where we can work together on these sections at our next meeting in April. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Stovall to talk a little bit more in depth about the goals and the, the work that we've been doing.
Amazingly, our committee has been really engaged in terms of what we want to see happen. And, and following the six-month goal that was set for us, so for November of 2022, our goal's been to gather information on past and present accountability and assessment systems so that we can identify research that best supports innovations and guides us through developing a system. And from these actions, we began to draft a report of our findings as well as identifying how we use the information for our next steps in our next six months of work that we will be doing. So we conducted interviews, we've gone on site visits, and identified what will be our next steps for the next six months. In addition to that, just thinking about what our short-term goals are, they progressed really quickly. That is one of those things. Again, I'm very excited about the committee, the excitement of the people that are on the committee and the work that they have done. So our progress as a result of our meetings and findings to this point has been to summarize what's been going on within our state and what goes on outside our states. So one of the things that we did first began was to look at, what do we need to know? And we determined that what we need to know is how assessment and accountability looks within Kentucky and how it looks with the outside of Kentucky. And so in doing so, we've identified, been able to identify some design principles for accountability and assessment and learn more about what our L3s and other innovative practices are within Kentucky. We've also taken the information from outside of Kentucky to actually crosswalk it to what can it look like with, from, from another country. So for example, we looked at what's going on in different states and, and United States as well as foreign countries. We looked at Finland, we looked at South Africa, and I think Singapore. Those are places that we looked at to identify what exactly are they doing? And how does that work with, how could we make that work within our own state? We, we're hoping to really, we're gathering more information and how that information will be used in the next six months. The goals of our standing committee will be specific in a separate document. Once we've established what our next steps are, it will be in a separate document that aligns with the competitive grants for state assessment. We want to learn what's happened in our districts, what's happening, what's happened since KARA, and what's happening elsewhere to inform us on what assessment and accountability looks like in the future. Then our long-term goals, that's our short-term goals. It's just to wrap up where we have been for the last six months in terms of writing a report, which we will have available soon. We're two-thirds of the way in terms of completing that. And our next goal in terms of long-term goals will be in alignment with what the CGSA application says, how it looks. And it will contain guardrails, deliverables as identified in them. We want to learn about, continue to learn more about what's happening with our L3 districts, looking at from where we would like to reflect on state reporting requirements compared to other assessments and accountability systems and generate a list of solutions as well as gaps that we may have found in terms of the research that we've done. Secondly, we'd like to gather more information on data integration and analysis across the state. Heard from some that, you know, the way data is collected in one place is different from another. And how can we make sure that that data, that data is available to all systems at all times? And especially when we think about our migrant students and our homeless students and our students that are in different other systems outside of the traditional public school setting. That's a big focus that we have so far. And we want to focus on high quality. That's very important to us, high quality accountability and assessment systems that support competency-based education, which is one of those places that we plan on going in the future when we look at the next six months. What does competency-based education look like for accountability and assessment?
So for our meetings, we have met three times since November. All of these from four to six PM in the afternoon. In January, we voted on and elected our chairs. We discussed our charter, kind of our guardrails for around the work that we're going to do, fully fleshed out those six-month work plans. And then we coordinated those two work stream groups. So Dr. Stovall has led the learning from within Kentucky. And then I led the learning from outside Kentucky. And then our team members just self-assigned based on their own interests. Like she said earlier, we looked at everything from different systems around the country, from Virginia to New Hampshire to Arkansas, and then also internationally, Finland, Canada, Australia. And then different team members assigned themselves to different areas in the work outside Kentucky. For the work within Kentucky, they looked particularly at the work that started with the Rose Division with KARA and the, both the successes and the failures of the KARA system. And where, because that was really innovative 30-plus years ago. And why did that not, why was that not sustainable? Where did it fall short? And what, what should we learn from that area? And then also, we have a very passionate member, like Dr. Stovall said, about the students that are outside of the traditional education system, the students that are in a DJJ facility, or they are homeless, or they are migrant or transient or foster care. And how are we providing the same level of educational services and educational opportunities that our students within the traditional school system are receiving? In February, we finalized our charter. We shared our resources that we, members had gathered within their own research based on their self-selected assignments and presented those within our work stream groups. And then in March, we met together again as a full committee to kind of share that work across the full committee. So we had some connections made between the work that we're looking at from inside Kentucky and the system that we looked at outside Kentucky. And I will say, for the work that we looked at from outside Kentucky, we had a lot of discussion about how the demographics of the populations, particularly in international systems and the cultural values are significant factor in why those systems are successful that we just don't have here either in Kentucky or within the United States. But we also talked about the value, and Ms. Adams, I heard you talk about that earlier, but our, our teach, teaching workforce is the value that other countries in particular place on education as a profession. And that we have to do more as educators to promote ourselves and professionalism of our careers, not just beyond the, the discussions that are going on in the general public. So in March, we also discussed it, or discussed it, discussed our design principles and drafted those as related to the habits of the Kentucky United We Learn Council. And then finally, our next steps, we are, like Dr. Stovall said, we are about finished with our report of our findings on our research. We actually looked at the draft for that this week. Our Stovall and our assessment committee partners did. And we hope to be sending that out to the full committee for their review prior to the April meeting. We plan to start articulating our six-month goal for the next six months of our work in April and then suggest improvements to our committee and the council processes. We particularly are interested in doing some more cross-committee work, because at this point, we feel like we've presented enough that we have, we want to get their ideas on how we can scale the work with assessment systems into those vibrant learning experiences. By June of this year, we will have conducted an international information gathering via historical review, research, learning from our L3 districts and other states in the nation, and then understanding existing models and frameworks. Every time we meet, we are asking for input from our committee members, and we work diligently to address their needs and their concerns. That information that will be synthesized is what we've collected about assessment and accountability inside and outside of Kentucky. Thank you all. If anybody has any questions?
Yeah, I think it's worth noting, as we, as I mentioned, we have 75 members. These are 75 people who have volunteered to do this work. So everything that you're hearing that they say that they've accomplished, these are the folks who are volunteering to go out and do this, do this research for us, go into districts and really look at this. So I know we've had conversations around this table about what, what is, what is different this time? This is what is different. And the fact that they're able to come here and tell you all this work that is happening by these volunteers who want to make a difference in education. So I plan to continue to bring to the table other members of this council who can continue to share with you all of the amazing work that they are volunteering to do for us.
Mrs. McCrery, oh, sorry, David.
No, I just wanted to really quickly say, Dr. Stovall mentioned, you have mentioned grants. And I think it's important that we recognize the community's experience, beginning with the grant. Nothing grand brought us to do this work. And I think it's also important to remember that how closely this ties into your reporting conversation about your reading agenda. I think beyond the thing, the first and most important thing that makes this different. And then across the country, people say, what's different is that you've invited the community to actually be participatory in this work. But secondly, and most, second most important to me is when I look at that graphic, and thank you so much for your kind words about our team's development of it, and the fact that the students at the center, this work is being directed in the right direction. We've never done this. That is, we've got to fix the learning experiences to inform what our accountability system needs to look like, rather than saying, "Oh, let's get an accountability system," and then try to figure out whether we can do that in the classroom or not, attach it. We're doing it the right direction this time. We're having the conversation about what the learning should look like. And then what are we going to measure based on that, rather than saying, "We're just going to measure the same things we've always measured." And good luck, teachers and classroom folks in making that happen. Let's make that happen and then decide how we're going to, how we're going to measure it when people come. So it feels really good as we work on this work. And now that we've got the council fully functional, we've got a lot more work. There's three more years of this grant and a lot more work that Dr. Stovall actually mentioned a couple of things about in the slides. So, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. I think Mrs. McCrery and then Dr. David, what you just said is what I tried to say earlier, but you said it much more eloquently. So amen. Thank you, ladies. Thank you. Thank you. This is massive work that you are doing. And how exciting it is to sit here and hear how it is all coming together. So thank you for your time. Thank you for your energy. Thank you for your commitment. Thank you for your desire to make education or Commonwealth better. Thank you. Dr. Bowman?
Yeah, amen to what you said. What I would suggest and recommend on our earlier thing then, there's a crossover from the committee to ours. So whether that's Karen, whether that's David, or one of you ladies, I know your time's for structure with your district. You got to do district work too, but whoever, so that that work measures. Maranix.
There you go. That's right. Or cross-hybridization maybe, you know? I think that's really important. Yeah. And Vivian, and Caitlin. Exactly.
But, but I agree with what, you know, David said, you know, that the, the earlier conversations is what this is all about. That's great.
Dr. Robinson?
So I was listening to this report and thinking, we have come to this charge and the grant with a lot of courage. And I'm going to urge that we bring in a dose of grace. Because nothing that was built 30 years ago is still working like it did 30 years ago. It probably needs at least innovation, if not replacement. So I believe that we are ready for the work that you are undertaking, because we did, we went through KARA, we went through standard spacing. We went through trying to use the technology that we had at the time to do what was really important for us. But in those 30 years, the technology of documentation and research has made huge advances that we now need to bring to the benefit of our learners and our educators and the goals and aspirations of our state. That is what we are doing. It's not a criticism of what we already did, but we did what we knew best as conscious. But we cannot expect that to be good or good enough right now. So let's, you know, wrap some grease around ourselves and recognize that it will take courage, because change is not easy. Even when everybody walks something, everybody walks change. They just don't walk anything different from what they already know. Now, the thing that really interests me, and I hope we can capture this as we're going through our efforts here, is what do we want the next generation of educators to be able to do about assessment and accountability? Because I believe that our model suggests to us that accountability is more important as a part of that foundation, that support. I mean, it used to be a dirty word to educators, you know? Accountability meant a hammer over your head at best. Now accountability is a system that informs what we do next. And so it's essential. So we got to learn how to embrace it. And so that's something that I will want to think about with you as we continue these discussions, this journey of learning, if you will, so that we can inform other aspects of what we do. I, I do want to thank our volunteers and, and our staff for being able to help support this kind of really stimulating discussion.
I think that's the part that excites me the most is that we're finally looking at designing an accountability system that is around what we say we value for our children and not just filling in a bubble test, but what do we truly value? And that's why that combined with the portrait of graduate that the state is putting out is so important. Because we're designing a system that is based on community feedback and what, what the parents and the, the community members of the state say that they value and want for our children.
And I think another thing that we learned, we've started to learn all of this. Sometimes people were here to say things about going other places and seeing what other people are doing. We're not trying to replicate what other people are doing. We're taking what they've done in terms of research-based practices. We're going to use those. But, you know, just looking at, for example, one of the countries that we looked at, well, one of, you know, South Africa, and looking at South Africa, one of the things that we saw that resonated with us is the fact that they have a lot of low literacy. And how are they addressing the low literacy? They also have teachers that are not trained in literacy. Well, that's something that's Well, that's something that's across the United States that we're finding. So those are the kind of things, when we're looking outside of us, we're not looking to replicate, but to find out what are best practices, especially based upon research, and what we could do to identify other ways that we can improve ourselves. And because I know sometimes people go, well, why are you going somewhere else? We're not trying to go anywhere else. We're just trying to learn from others. And so that's what's exciting about the work, and literacy definitely is a focus that we have right now, is building the literacy skills we can be in the naked. But if a child cannot read or write, how can they do the curriculum? Think about it. Math is math word problems. And math problems, you can't, if you can't read what it says, you can't do what they expect you to do. And the same thing with just basic reading skills. And we recognize, many members on our committee are recognizing that that's one of the major things that we will have to focus on, if we're going to build a strong accountability and assessment.
That's a meaningful comment. You just answered a question I was going to ask. The first thing I'd say is that when you face difficult problems, you've got to gang up on, and do it with two or three people that are to do it all wrong themselves, up from what they've already come up with, probably. But bringing in outsiders, getting diverse inputs, it is very vital. Secondly, I was going to ask you if you saw anything so far that excited you, because I do think it's important to go out and see what other people have done. So that, for example, I'm sure is one that I would forward you to give it now. But there are going to be things that, things that you see that can be added to what we're doing and what we need to do. But I certainly love what you're doing, and your strong interest in what needs to be done in the state.
And then I would be happy to just conclude with one last thank you. Thank you to Dr. Stevens and Dare County for the time that you've committed. And Dr. Stovall, it's just always a pleasure to get to hear from you and to work with you, and the kind of the selflessness and the sacrifice that you've made to lead this work is just sincerely appreciated. I can't wait until the convening later this month to engage with you more around the work. Dr. Poe, as always, a great reminder that we've got to feed this work to each other, and then our work to the co-council, so that we always have this kind of constant sharing of information as it emerges in real time. So you both brought a depth of professional expertise and leadership experience to the work, and I know that your team appreciates your time as do we. So thank you again very much for your partnership.
If there's time to remind the board members that you were invited to serve on panel at the co-council meeting on April twenty-sixth, if you are interested in doing so, we'll hear from the other committee members about their goal. So if you're able to attend, we would love to.
And you just have to do as well as Kathy and Sarah. Thank you very much. Board members and audience, we have about an hour left on our agenda, but I know we are all in desperate need of a bio break. So let's take about seven minutes until eleven forty at the time, and then we will, I mean, we jump right back into our agenda as planned. Thank you for that break. And the next item on our agenda is our next review item around vibrant student learning experiences in literacy. I hope the title of the agenda item does not escape you. I'm so excited that Nikki and her team heard us and wanted to respond to us in helping us make these really direct connections between our United We Learn Deeper Learning Court and this important conversation that we've been having about early literacy. So I will ask Nikki to introduce her team and then turn it over.
Thank you so much, Karen Young, Asher Robinson, Commissioner Glass, and members of the board. We are very happy to be here today, and I have with me the lovely Ashley Hill, who is our Assistant Director of Early Literacy, just passed around an activity that we will be conducting with you today. But she is here representing the Corbin Independent School District. She's their former chief academic officer, so she's here to tell their story. And then also at the table is Brian Dishman, who's the chief academic officer from Wayne County Public School. And then joining us virtually, we have Robin Pointer, who's the Assistant Superintendent for Instruction and Assessment at Pecan County. So just very thankful to them. They are giving up their workday. Some of them are giving up their spring break to be with us today. So thankful for them and their willingness to both partner with us, but also the leadership of their team exhibiting them in their.
We are going to do something a little different. I know that boards generally don't do tasks in terms of work, so we're going to do a little something different. So, so hold on tight with me just a second. Mrs. Ashley has given you a challenge. It's today's learning task. And that task is going to have you to design a creation today, and you are going to read this text about what you were going to design. You're going to think about what features you're going to include, who you're going to design for. And at the very bottom of your sheet she gave you is the actual reading task. So I'm going to have you to look at that for just a second and read over that reading task, okay? I'm going to stop you there. Does anybody, does anybody have any questions about what I'm asking you to do today? Anybody know what you're doing today? Thank you. Thank you for your honesty. I can see why you're being confused, because on the screen and then on your task, you can see there, that is a, that is a passage at seventy percent accuracy for a student. Okay, Mrs. Ashley is going to now give you another packet that's going to help you see a little clearer, more clearly, hopefully, about what we're going to do today. And you can see that there's a lot of different words missing in the seventy percent accuracy. And when I read that, I had no clue about what that passage was actually about. So the text that she's passing around now, the front is the eighty percent accuracy. You'll just kind of scan over that, and I would like to hear if that helps you at all. Know any better about what you're actually designing it politely? Go ahead and play it, because I want to get to these districts' testimonials. So go ahead and play it. The next page is ninety percent. You can see what that looks like. And then the last page is a hundred percent. So if you will scan down to the hundred percent, at the very bottom, it says that what, what would you do if you could design your own maze? Did any of you all realize that that was what that passage was about, a maze? Because even at eighty and ninety percent accuracy, our students can't, if they can't decode the words, if they don't know the foundational skills, then they're going to have trouble accessing that text and accessing the learning. They could have not. You couldn't complete your challenge today. You couldn't get that task done, because you had no idea what I was asking you to do. So I want to take just a second, because I feel like it's very important for you to kind of process that. And I know this is also a little different than what you normally do. But if you can just think about how you felt when you first read that passage, and what that made you feel like, and maybe just talk amongst your shoulder partner there for just a second. And I would ask for you to just think about, if you were a struggling student, how would you feel if I was your teacher and I asked you to read that text? So just take thirty seconds and talk that through with your shoulder partner. You would have been, you all would be brave enough to share.
Yeah, I'd be brave. You feel frustrated, and then you become disengaged, and you really don't want to listen, and you become disruptive as a particular student, because during this particular activity, I feel frustrated, but I also feel inadequate, that I don't know the material like someone else does. So that's why then I've got to act.
And I lived this, teaching kindergarten and teaching reading and literacy skills, and the students who so desperately wanted to read, and they would try to challenge themselves and run up against a brick wall like this. And what they felt was frustration. In some cases, I had to be careful that they didn't feel the beat, because it would be very easy for that defeat to just kill their little souls and not want to try anymore. Absolutely. So the frustration, I heard the word mad, you know, incompetence, those kinds of feelings is what our students feel when they can't access the text. Nikki has shared with you several times the data slides from our Kentucky Summit of Assessment Results in Reading, in third grade particularly. And just as a reminder, half of those students, half of our students in the state of Kentucky are not reading at proficient levels. So that is what many of them are feeling, that frustration, that anger, they're going to act out because they can't engage in the learning that is happening in their classroom, because they, because they can't access the text. So I want you to look at the next slide. That is what's commonly called the reading rope. Some people call that scars and wrinkles rope. But that over on the left-hand side of that slide is all of the different strands and pieces and parts that it takes in order to build a skilled reader. So there's multiple pieces there in the rope in order to build skilled reading. And it's very important that the science of reading movement has been very successful in raising importance of foundational reading skills, like phonics and word decoding, those type of skills. But there's little doubt that those skills, which allows students to understand how spoken words, our language, and are represented in print, are foundational to the reading success and to literacy acquisition and development. The National Reading Panel, along with multiple other research literature, kind of attest to that. So we know that to be true. Literacy is simply not possible without mastery of these skills. In fact, it should no longer be a point of contention. They must be taught systematically and cumulatively. Yet unfortunately, the science of reading movement has often been interpreted far too narrowly and exclusively focused on foundational skills. Reading success requires much more, as you can see on that chart, much more than just the foundational skills. There's other factors critical for literacy development, including those that address language, meaning, and communication. Arguably, one of the most important is knowledge. Knowledge is necessary to comprehend what we read, and foundational skills are literally meaningless unless readers can make sense of those words and texts. This sense-making requires knowledge that must be systematically built and not just activated, though through instructional experiences and curricula that evoke curiosity and a desire to learn more. We know it takes all of those components on that screen to increase the reading success. High-quality professional development and learning can support educators understanding how students learn to read, why some students struggle, and what high-quality instruction looks like. And one of the goals, one of our goals, is to support the field in understanding how all of those components on your screen work together to impact the rich and meaningful experiences for our students. So the professional learning is an important piece too. And on the next slide, I want to tell you just very quickly about the professional learning through the Kentucky Reading Academies, because that's exactly what we are trying to do with these academies. Our teachers need to learn how students learn to read and why some students struggle. It also includes strategies for diagnosing, for monitoring, and for instructing and intervening. So in January of 2023, we sent our letters participants a survey. So we have over eighteen hundred participants, and four hundred and thirty-three of them responded to that survey, which I thought was significant, to get four hundred and thirty-three educators to respond to a survey. That, that tells me they have something to say. And it was overwhelmingly positive, the feedback that we got. So out of those four hundred and thirty-three responses, we had ninety-five percent of them to say, this is new information to us. This is something that we have not learned before. And I want to go back and say very quickly, they had only learned two units at this point. When we gave them the survey, they were two units into the year out of four. And then they'll take eight totals, because it's a two-year professional learning. So only two units in, they said, this is brand-new information to us. And number two, they said, this is relevant to what we are doing. Whether they are a coach, a teacher, an administrator, ninety-five percent of them said, this is relevant to my role. We had multiple written testimonies. We had, a lot of them talk about the classroom gains, the student progress. I wish you could read all of the testimonies, but I do want to highlight just a couple. One last data point, ninety-three percent of the respondents said it helps them to better meet the diverse learning needs of their students. So it is significant data for us, that this is making an impact. On the next slide, I want to highlight this, one of these testimonials. This is Courtney Lyons from Memorial Elementary in Hart County School District. I will not read that verbatim, but her story is very powerful. She says she had a third-grade student to come into her classroom, and he said, I cannot read, and I do not want to read. The third grade, you've got to keep that in mind. So she started, she started with letters. She was two units in. She said, I started incorporating the strategies that I've learned thus far in letters. And she said, he has made significant gains, almost a year's worth, over a year's worth, she says, of gains. Is he where he needs to be? No. He's got a lot of more learning to do. But she said the most important part of his story is that he now volunteers to read. He loves reading. He wants to read, because he has the confidence and the skills that he needs in order to be a reader. I think one of the most important things, she says, though, there's that very last line, it says, letters transforms how educators think about teaching reading, and how, I know it's really changed my view and impacted how I plan. A couple more on the next slide. Again, I want to get to our district, so I won't read all of these verbatim. Mark Gaskins in Fort Thomas says, this has been the best teaching experience, learning experience I have had in nineteen years of teaching. I've had multiple testimonials like that. It doesn't matter if they are a first-year teacher. It doesn't matter if they are a fifth-year teacher. It doesn't matter. I've got teachers taking letters that have twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven years of experience. They all say the same thing. This is new information. It's the best professional learning I have had in this extensive professional learning. It is a heavy lift, for sure, for our educators, but they're saying this is good, and this is, this is relevant to what I'm doing. Cindy Kennedy in Rockcastle County says, this is the training I've been searching for for decades. Kristy Rhodes in Jefferson County says, I have been able to apply my knowledge immediately. And then Kristy Nelson in Livingston says, it's given me a deeper understanding of essential knowledge and necessary for transformational change in our reading instruction. So, and then I don't want to leave out Ms. Marissa Chris from Scott County. She says, truly making a difference in the reading competence and abilities for my student. It does impact the student experience. The last thing that I'll talk to you about is that the slide that there says prevention instead of intervention. Ultimately, the Read to Succeed Act and the Letters Professional Learning supports teacher in taking them early and often to meet the learning needs of our students. The significance in prevention is outstanding. If you will skip down to that third line there, where it says third grade, keep in mind our third-grade student we were talking about earlier in our testimonial. It takes three hours a day over a long period of time in order to close gaps if they get to third grade with those gaps in their foundational learning. Our teachers do not have the time or capacity to spend three hours a day with the student. It's just not possible. So we want to prevent that from happening and then have them to intervene. The focus must be on tier one, because if you can't, you cannot intervene your way out of a core instruction problem. If you have a weak tier-one curriculum, giving students intervention in a weak curriculum one-on-one is not going one-on-one is not going to get our kids to proficiency. It will actually do the opposite.
But we also know that professional learning is not enough. And so we are hearing and you all have expressed comments from teachers who feel frustration because their instructional resources are not in line with the professional learning that we're receiving. So as the KDE collection of high-quality instructional resources. So on the next slide, we have linked, and no, we don't really have time to dig into that much today, but the Consumer Guide for Reading and Writing Instructional Resources has been published, a Y. Just this week, actually, we have published a Consumer Guide for Mathematics Resources. And then for the other content areas, we have the instructional resources aligned every brick. And again, the goal is that we are empowering districts to have a positive starting point with effectiveness and reliability and validity. And then they can select a resource that best fits their local instructional visions and local priorities. So that's our hope. And I do want to spend a little bit of time talking about knowledge-based and knowledge-building curriculum today. So on the next slide, I'm not going to read that to you word for word, but I do want to say that in considering vibrant student experiences, we feel compelled to speak to the benefits of knowledge-building curriculum as it relates to deeper learning specifically. So collectively, to help students make sense of what they're reading, beginning in kindergarten, knowledge-building curricula are intentionally designed to build meaningful knowledge in science, in social studies, in literature, in the arts. And so the KDE is not advocating in any sense for a phonics-only approach to literacy instruction. Is that important? Absolutely. And I hope that Kristi's demonstration helps us to understand that. But beyond that, if we are going to allow students to engage in deeper learning experiences, they have to be in this knowledge-building space where we're fostering that simultaneously with foundational skills instruction. So you could quote Vice Chair Robinson, this, it must be an end. This cannot be an either-or in literacy instruction. So students, again, must be empowered to become readers who are self-reliant and lifelong explorers and knowledge seekers. And this building knowledge of the world, including topics, phenomena, even just problems that they face within their local communities, it is a community endeavor. And so the more they're exposed to that knowledge basis, the more they do know and the more they're able to apply and transfer that knowledge across the content areas and into their, into their jobs and fields and what they're going to do after they graduate.
Yeah.
Yes. So we believe that this is truly important and we're considering how we can encourage districts to join us in the professional learning opportunity, but also to consider the resources that they have for teachers, for students across their districts. And so the last thing that I'm going to come on before, I do turn it over to Ashley. You know, and you frankly said this beautifully, but this is Ashley. Well, thank you. But when we think about these six competencies that you have adopted and that we've stated are a promise to Kentucky students and communities across the Commonwealth, when you look at those competencies, it will take a deeper learning environment to allow students to engage in this way. And they have to be able to read and engage with rich texts, grade-level texts. So again, to be a critical thinker, to be an effective communicator and productive collaborator, and a creative contributor, all of these things frankly require what we're doing with professional learning and with high-quality instructional resources. And so as I said from the beginning, we believe that this is an investment. It's an investment in teachers. It's an investment in students. And it is for their greater good in life and in a moment, in a grade-level span, it is good for their academic growth at that moment, at that time as well. So I am very excited to turn it over now to Ashley Hill to tell you a little bit more about the Corbin story.
Thank you so much. So Mickey had mentioned, I am the former Chief Academic Officer, former independent. I just left there in February on an MIA position here, working with Mickey and Kristi. So I'm so excited to tell you about the journey that we're experiencing in Corbin right now. And just to kind of reiterate what has been said, there is, I think, a misconception out there that structured literacy is just about phonics. It's just about decoding words. But as you can see from the title of this, Enriching Experiences, in Corbin, we adopted a knowledge-based curriculum. And I'm going to tell you a little bit about it in just a moment and give you some examples. But the students are having experiences that we had, we didn't even know we could give them because of the richness of the text and the content that they're learning about now. So if you'll go over the next slide, you may have to click it just a little bit. There should be two. Yeah. So what you're looking at is as is stated from spring of 2019. So that was that last, quote-unquote, "normal" year. So if you're looking on the left side, based on math, our universal screener, we were sending on in K5, 58% of our kids ready for the next grade list, which means we had 42% that were not. And then if you look on the right side, that is what your triangle or your pyramid should look like. If you have high-quality tier-one instruction, it should be meeting the needs of at least 80% of your kids with interventions in with approximately 20%. And that speaks to that prevention instead of reaction. So that's where we were. When we looked at that, and that was a couple months after I started at SDAO, I thought, oh, my gosh, like, we have got to do something about this. We knew it was a tier-one problem. We actually did not have a tier-one common instructional resource. We had teachers piecemealing things together and that's not their fault at all. So we knew that we had to do something about that. So if you'll, if you'll go to the next slide, here's what we did. So in step one, like I said, we focused on our tier-one instruction in the school year 2020, 2021. Now, in our district at that time, we were virtual from August until March. Okay, so we did not get kids back until March of 21. And so we honestly, COVID gave us just a little bit of time because we were all at home to be able to look through lots of different resources. Because I said, guys, we've got to adopt a program. So let's come together and figure it out. And so that spring of 2020, we were able to get together a lot of stakeholders and we looked through lots of different, I think we looked at five different companies. And we used the Instructional Resources Alignment Rubric that was new at that time from KDE's website. We were so excited to see that. So we adopted Amplify CKLA, which is a knowledge-based curriculum. Now, I'm going to be honest, I had only been in my role just a few months. Kindergarten, first grade, they were not about it. And I didn't feel like I had the leverage at that point to say, get about it, right? So we adopted it in grades two through five. We just, I said, we'll just go ahead. That's fine. You all do your thing. So what happened was, in the spring of 21, kindergarten and first grade said, Ms. Hill, can we please get that too? And six through eight. And so by the next year, we're aligned K8 for the first time ever. So something else we had to do, you can't just get a good program, right? Because programs don't teach, teachers teach. So we altered the master schedule to ensure that no students were pulled out of core instruction. Sadly, we had the practice in our districts of pulling kids out for intervention during the literacy block. Know better, do better, right? So we ensured that that was no longer going to happen. And we provided high-quality professional learning to support how to use the program. And that is sustainable. We do it each year because you get new teachers in each year. And so we can't just say, here's the book and go on, right? We have to revisit that. How do you use it? What, you know, what does it look like and that sort of thing? And I'm going to be honest, that was the first time I ever heard of the science of reading, when we talked about Amplify. As if I was a classroom teacher for 11 years, have a literacy specialist master's degree, and had no clue what I was doing until I learned about this. So if you'll go to the next slide. So that was that first year, right? So moving into the 21, 22 school year, which is the past year, we said, okay, we feel like we're getting our tier-one right, okay? We're not perfect, but we've got, our scores are increasing, our students are happier, we have less behavioral incidents. And that kind of speaks to what Dr. Post said, but when you're not engaged, you're going to act out, right? Anything to get out of that. So we expanded, like I said, that evidence-based reading program Amplify to grades K through eight. We hired a reading interventionist through Esther Funding. Thank goodness for that Esther Funding. And we adopted an intervention program that also aligns with the research behind how students learn to read. And so we adopted SPIRE, S-P-I-R-E, SPIRE. And it stands for, and I can't think of what it stands for right now, but it's awesome. And it is a multi-sensorial approach to teaching students how to decode words, how to get those words off the page. So that's our intervention. And then our tier-one is building knowledge and they can use those decoding skills. It really has worked beautifully. So because of the knowledge curriculum that we adopted, we have students that are learning about the Civil War in second grade. We have students who are learning about body systems in first grade. I didn't learn about that until I was in middle school. So we have students talking about immigration. We had all these equity issues before that we didn't even know about because some teachers had time to go look and find and piecemeal some good stuff together, right? Some other teachers that had to, you know, had children or other duties right after school, they were just trying to pull and find. And so it mattered whose teacher, like, who your kid's teacher was, I guess is what I'm trying to say. It mattered. Now it doesn't matter, right? We, all of our teachers are equipped with what they need to be successful. So if you go to the next slide. So the literacy block has been completely transformed. And I know that Kristi has already gone over this with you, but I just want to make sure that everyone sees and understands that that top part of the ropes and the orange and red colors, that's the knowledge base, right? So once we get the decoding, which is that foundation on the bottom, we've got to build knowledge in some way. Reading the CASA on the map is not getting us anywhere, right? So we, our teachers were a little bit apprehensive at first. They were like, I think this is too hard for the kids. And I don't know if they can, if they can make sense of these things. We have first graders that talk about the War of 1812 at recess, like, for real. So it has been just amazing to see. If you'll, if you'll go to the next slide, please. Okay, so grade one, they had a unit on body systems. And so we were able to partner with multiple stakeholders in the community. We had some medical offices come. And you can see there is a little boy getting his heart rate checked. They showed them all kinds of things. If you go to the next slide. Actually, an ambulance came and let students walk through and see kind of how emergency services work. If we are reading low-level texts, we are never going to have a reason to bring in health care workers. Our students, these students are, some of them are going to be our health care workers someday. And so we plant that seed early and then who knows where that may take us. So if you go to the next one. The Red Hound Olympics. So Red Hound is our mascot. And in grade two, they had a unit over ancient Greece and Rome. And so we were able to partner with our high school students. And listen, those second graders think that they're superstars, those high school students. And so we were able to have little stations all around the track. They had crown making. If you'll go to the next slide, toga making. They were able to eat foods from that period in time. So they had pita's with like olive oil and spice and grape juice, right? But some of the kids were like, I think it's wrong. And then you can see there is the little toga making. And they also had some Olympic events, track events. And so it was just so awesome to be able to collaborate and build that sense of community. If you go to the next slide. This is from also grade two. So the, they had a civil war. And I apologize, my son just passed away. He's in this picture and this is about him all shot off the cross. So that's my Eli in the middle holding the paper. And they went to Springfield War Battlefield after they completed their Civil War unit. And the other pictures you see are some words that Eli made in our playroom that are out. And he hadn't really been playing that way in a while. He was more into video games and outside and YouTube and all that. And this was just a couple weeks ago. He called me down and he said, look what I made. He said, I made two swords. And so you see those there, they're opposing. And on the right side, you probably can't see it, but he wrote Air Force. And I said, Eli, there was not an Air Force in the Civil War. And he said, I know, but Papa Estle, which he never met, that was his great-great father, was in the Air Force. He was connecting new to none. In that one, it's about connecting new to none. He was able to process that because of what he already knew. If you go to the next one. Our third-grade students visited after learning about Latin sound, visited ECU. They went to the planetarium, they talked to some students from Yale Science, and they were able to experience some of those things they hadn't learned about. So it was just a wonderful opportunity for them. All right, so, thank you. Here are some quotes. These are actual quotes from some students, and that's my little boy, again, there in the middle. He was not one that said this. He, he was, he could read well, thank goodness. But a third-grade student said, used to, I didn't like to read books, but now I love it. A second-grade student said, I can read. I have never been able to do that. But what we're doing matters. If you go to the next slide. Not going to read it to you, but our teachers are talking about how we actually have kids now that are really reading. They're not sitting in independent reading time, hoping that the time will pass so that no one knows that they're all sitting there reading. You can go to the next slide. And this is from a second-grade teacher who just said that she has seen such a shift in herself because of letters training that Kristi and Mickey spoke about and also the use of CKLA. So it's just really changed that entire culture at our school. If you go to the next one. So just real quick, what we were doing before on the left-hand side is everybody was doing the best they could. Some were going this way, some were going that way. Now we're all going the same direction. Go to the next slide. So the good news, where are we now? And so this is sad, don't go to the next one yet. This is sad because, no, do go to the next one. The students actually next week will be taking our math assessment, so I will have spring 2023 data then. I don't have it now for this, so I'm having to go by last year. Okay, so spring of 2022, where are we? Look at our triangle now. And then you'll have to click it. Yeah, okay. So we were at 58% if you remember. Now we're at 64, which, that's 6%. That doesn't sound like a lot. Go to the next slide, please. 6% means 71 students in one year. That is three and a half classrooms of students that are on track to efficiently read. We're keeping on, keeping on, guys. We're doing all the things that we're supposed to do to keep that momentum going. And I just appreciate you letting me share.
I'm Brian Dishman. I'm the superintendent and chief academic officer in Wayne County Schools. I've got just a couple slides. May and I just wanted to tell some stories today. If you look at the graphic that's up there, this is the reading pyramid, which is like a little bit more simplistic view of that Scarborough's reading rope we've seen a couple times already. But it reflects the things that come from the National Reading Panel report, the five components of reading. It also reflects the idea that you build from a foundation of things like new awareness and phonics and head toward the ultimate goal of reading, which is comprehension. And on the right there, you can see the high-quality instructional resources that we're using in Wayne County to progress each one of these five components. But I want to back up about four years ago and tell you that as a district, we really became really alarmed that we weren't getting the student outcomes that we thought we should get when it came to reading. We've seen a lot of our students reach middle school and they still struggling. We felt like we were aligned to the findings of the National Reading Panel report. I mean, we would have told you, we've got these five components of reading. I mean, we would have told you, we've got these five components of reading built right into our instruction. Because I'm sure Ashley would have said the same thing important. But when we started to really go deeper into what we were actually doing instructional, what we found was that basically our pyramid was inverted. Uh, our focus was very much on comprehension. It was top levels, uh, of the pyramid. We were doing that, uh, to the neglect of foundational skills like the new awareness and phonics. Now, it, it's interesting, some of the conversation I got to hear this morning, uh, about accountability mindset and assessment structures. Those very things, I think, caused us as schools to make some of those choices. I think that's part of the reason why our pyramid was inverted before. Uh, this is because of the assessment structures that exist. But anyway, that was just a thought that I had as I was listening to the board's conversations. Um, so what we, we wanted to do, we pushed reset, was we were really looking for, we, we realized we had a tremendous gap of phonics. Now, every, uh, group of resources out there, reading will tell you that it has phonics as a part of. Uh, but you, you gotta go deeper, um, you know. And well, the National Reading Panel Report really said about phonics was that, uh, it has to be systematic, and explicit phonics instruction. Um, and there's some studies out there that show that about thirty percent of kids will not learn and read proficiently if they don't have systematic explicit phonics instruction. I can tell you that in rural Kentucky, where the effects of generational poverty can be staggering, that that number is much, much higher than thirty percent. It makes it twice that much. And it has to do with brain development and exposure and some of those things that we know from science reading. Um, so we, we went to search of something, uh, to help us with this and, and what we chose is a program called Reading Horizons. And that's the high quality instructional resource that we use in Wayne County Foundation literacy instruction. Uh, the Reading Horizons method is based on the work in Gillingham Principles, uh, of instructions. You may be familiar with that. Uh, the skills are taught explicitly. Kids are taught exactly what they need to know. But systematic, there is a sequence to them, uh, and it builds from the simplest skills, uh, to more complex. It's also very much a multi-sensory, uh, instructional program. Uh, and that, not only does that help increase student engagement, uh, during reading horizons time, but it also helps them to engage in different areas of their brain, make those cross connections in their brain. Science of reading tells us it's so important to become a form of decoding. Um, Reading Horizons also uses a unique marking system. Uh, if you observe a Reading Horizons lesson, you'll see kids with their white boards out and their markers and their writing words and their marking words, approving the words, using the skills and strategies that they know about decoding. Of course, if they, uh, get more fluent in that, that marking system phases out as they go. Um, Reading Horizons is, is a very high-energy, fast-paced, and it's deeply engaging part, uh, of our students today. Um, but of course, as it's been mentioned a couple of times already, we also knew that phonics alone, uh, would not solve the issues that we have with student readers in Wayne County. Um, our old approach, reading instruction, very much emphasized comprehension strategy instruction. And the idea there was that, uh, if we learn a comprehension strategy, say for example, like identifying the main idea of a text, if we get really good at this strategy, then we can just take this strategy and apply it to any text that we've read in, but it helps to figure out, um, the meaning of that text. The problem, of course, is, uh, if you can't decode all the words, or even if you can decode all the words and you even have plenty of comprehension strategies available to you, it's really difficult to understand the text for which you have no background knowledge. Uh, I like to use the example of, uh, the service manual that the automotive service technician uses at the dealership to service a vehicle. You know, I can probably call all the words in that, but I don't have sufficient technical knowledge to understand what that manual says about servicing my vehicle. Um, there's intensive training and knowledge building that has to happen for that automotive service technician to be able to use that manual to, to do that. Okay? And the same is true for our students. They must have knowledge about what they're reading in order to truly comprehend. And so that's where Core Knowledge Language Arts comes in and actually has already told you a, a lot about that. Uh, but it's an intentional approach to building background knowledge. And, um, what happens is students get to engage in very, very complex texts, texts that are maybe two or three grade levels above their own ability to code because it uses a read aloud, uh, model. Uh, and they're doing read alouds in history, science, literature, and the arts. Students are developing rich vocabulary, uh, through this. Um, and, and you know, of all the proof of them, resources that we use in our districts, uh, I think none has created more enthusiasm, sparked more curiosity in the part of our students than CKLA. I want to share a couple of quotes from, from parents and then I have a video clip I want to share with you. Um, this parent writes, "I began to see and hear knowledge being discussed at home and seemed to far exceed the age of my children, seven to nine." They began talking about the Boston Tea Party, the American Revolution, systems of the human body, space exploration, ancient Roman civilization, and other topics that continued to blow me away. They didn't just recall facts. They had a deep knowledge of these topics that allowed them to carry on a conversation at the dinner table, even with adults. Another parent writes, "Transferring to a new district in the beginning of first grade, I was nervous that the repetition of reading skills resulted in boredom in my son. However, he has told me numerous times how much he loves the school, his teacher, and he says, Mom, we learned so many cool things from all around the world. He's fascinated. Comes home constantly, studying facts he has learned in CKLA. He is not only learning, but he is engaged and intrigued." And then one final quote that I'll share. "My third grader led my family outside after dark last week to look at the alignments of the planets and discussed how rare it was to be able to see so many in the night sky. Because of the spark at CKLA about it, he has downloaded apps to new constellations, planets, sought out books related to the content." Um, if you go to the next slide, please. I want to let one of our students kind of speak for herself. This, this is Kate. Kate is now a third grader. This video was taken about a year ago when she was a second grader. Uh, and she's just being asked to, uh, talk about what she's been learning in CKLA. So let's hear what Kate has to say.
I've been learning a lot about science. And, um, we've been learning about the digestive system and, um, cells. And lots of cells make up tissues and lots of tissues make up organs like your heart and your lungs. And lots of organs make up organ systems, like the nervous system and the digestive system. And lots of organ systems make up organisms, which are bodies of people. And so, um, I've been learning about the digestive system and when you swallow food, you eat it up and then it goes down your esophagus into your stomach. And, um, your stomach chews it up, then it goes into your small and large intestines and it comes out as waste.
For biology teacher to hear a second grader use vocabulary that I taught to 10th grade students in biology, use it appropriately and use it well, speaks to the vibrant learning experience that they have seen through CKLA. Thank you.
And we do have joining us virtually, Robin.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Um, I'm going to ask our superintendent, who's been sitting here staring at me through this, um, to come join me because this is a story of Hancock County. Um, and I'm gonna not repeat a lot of things that my, um, predecessors have just said because everything that they said is true. We, uh, Robbie Asbury and myself, we started in Hancock County just last school year. And, um, Robbie comes with a story, a personal story of making sure that all students have what they need in order to be successful. I come from a background of educator, administrator. And for the past 10 years before this position, I worked for the Kentucky Department of Education in continuous improvement as an ERL. So when we both came, we had our stories and our background and it was like a perfect storm. He wanted every student to have what they needed and I was looking at everything systematically. So our style of leadership is listen, learn, and then lead. We took much time with the listening part and we learned that our educators did not have a true understanding of what a literacy program looked like. They were engrossed with a true tier-two instruction and thought that that was their core. Now let that sink in. They had been doing this for years, but they thought that that was truly what teaching reading was about. And it was a tier-two. Very, they had all of the pieces and, and they were doing a fantastic job with the tier-two. But were frustrated because they didn't understand that that was not a tier-one. So when someone said that, um, it's a tier-one problem, it truly is. So then Mr. Asbury and I said, well, you know, um, informed teachers are the best assurance against reading failure. Right? We can't start anywhere in order to start pressing the fact that what they're doing is wrong because they believed in what they were doing. And honestly, they were doing a great job instructing. But those arrows that you just saw, that was exactly what we had. We had them going everywhere. And when I talked to our principals about looking at the journey of our students from kindergarten to first, to second, to third, is it methodical? Is it vertically aligned? And we had to say no. So fortunately, we had a perfect storm here in Hancock County last year. We also had a, a relationship with the University of Louisville through, um, what was that? Well, anyway, they, um, they helped us with Project Link is what it was. They helped us with the research, um, and what we needed to do to build our foundation. So in order to build that foundation and, um, the professional development that our teachers needed, we found that letters was the best option for the science of reading. We, um, understood that our teachers had pieces of that, but not all of that. And once we started that, we also realized that that had the philosophy behind the science of reading, but we also needed the methodology behind the science of reading. So as we began to do the professional development, our teachers learned, hmm, we are not teaching from a core one or a tier-one core reading program. They got it. They understood. And as we learn in Kentucky Department of Education when we're doing turnaround, urgency is the first, um, component of change. And I think it was Ms. Osborne said, change is hard, but it only comes when everyone is working together on that. So we had a journey in place on how we were going to do this because as you heard, letters training is a two-year commitment and it's thirty hours each year. So you do the math and that's sixty hours of training. And then we were asking them to also do Orton Gillingham training. That's an additional thirty hours. So that was ninety hours of training we were going to ask our teachers to do. And our board jumped on, board, very quickly. And they wanted to support our teachers because as I think it was Mickey was talking, you know, and Christie, our students are frustrated with reading and so are our teachers with teaching reading. So the foundation of instruction should begin with our teachers first, so that they understand and how things should connect. So we got the buy-in. So the urgency came just from the training and we were able to, um, select a good core curriculum in reading, um, in the process. And this was our first year to start that. We had, um, CKLA and we also had Wonders. So we have two elementary schools and they chose two different. However, they really studied to make sure that that learning rope was in place and that systematically those phonetic pieces were intertwined along with the literacy pieces. So it's both together to make one good balanced literacy program. In doing that, at this point, we have a hundred percent of our teachers who are trained in letters and in Orton Gillingham, and we have a good solid core curriculum. And we know with sustainability, we have changing of teachers in and out. We have put in place a literacy coach within our district to make sure that, um, she is certified in Orton Gillingham and can be a facilitator for letters. So she supports our teachers along the way to make sure that our curriculum is being taught with fidelity and that we have the correct components along the way. What else have we got to say? We've had over twenty districts to come and observe our classrooms. And what they come out saying is they like that there is consistency. And this is what we started with, was the journey of the student, consistency in the instructional, um, format, so that the students were using the same language in the methodology from kindergarten and actually all the way to 12th grade. We also found that we did not have a tier-three in middle school, nor a tier-three at the high school. So those, we had, um, six teachers together from the middle school and the high school. They were trained in the methodology as well, so that we could develop that tier-three. And I tell them all the time, you're saving lives because we do not want to have any child graduate our high school that cannot read. So it's been a systematic approach from a district perspective, but we had to start with our teachers. And we had to inform them. And now they feel very comfortable in what they do. Obviously, they've had over a hundred visitors through their classrooms. And we feel like we're on track. We've had two companies who have approached us to do a case study. And, um, we're trying to work that out with them as well, so that we can also help other districts. So that's it.
Thank you both for joining us virtually and to all of those who are here. To hear from Oregon Independent, from Wayne County and from Hancock County gives us such a great perspective about how the work is unfolding, um, at different size districts, independent, county, rural, um, city. All of those, uh, I think are super informative. I, I know we are sensitive to time, but I would like to, I know we have lots of board members that would uh, like to offer a comment. Um, many thanks to Mickey and Christie and the team. You heard, um, our heartburn. We sensed our heartburn and responded to it. Um, when I hear the kinds of examples that we've heard from all three districts in terms of, um, deeper learning uh, as the nexus for good literacy instruction, uh, knowledge-based curriculum, uh, the engagement of Red Hounds and projects, um, Akido in Wayne County who reads to understand across the curriculum. Those examples are just really powerful. They speak to me. They answer the polarized concern that I had that some folks think that science of reading is just about phonics. Other folks think that, uh, comprehensive-based, uh, reading is just about queuing. All of those things are outliers, stretches in the conversation, and they really distract us from what's most important around, uh, professional learning, uh, with a really, really clear focus on solid tier-one instruction. So I love hearing the systems emerge. Mrs. McCreary.
During my wheelhouse, this is the tiny area, this, what's the letter?
Um, and I, I, I was most concerned more than anything about are our children being challenged? In my kindergarten classroom, the highest level reader I had was eighth grade reading level. Uh, the majority of them, when they left, they were a second, third, fourth grade reading level when they left my classroom. So that was my biggest concern. And you have put those concerns to rest today. So I appreciate your presentation. That's absolutely wonderful. Um, I have preached for years the importance of that schema being in place. As a matter of fact, my kindergartners would, I would say, how did you know that? And they would say, it's in my schema. Kiss your brain, that's right. Um, so everything that you said today uh, makes me want to just do flips. I will not do that. But I'm thrilled. Thank you, thank you, thank you for leading the
But I'm thrilled. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for leading the charge. Thank you for what you're doing. I would love to come and do some observations just because I think it would do my heart good. But thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Trumble.
I just, I know that during the pandemic, the first and second graders mostly on virtual. I guess their first and second graders now. Have you seen where the decline in reading, especially in those grades? And if you do anything special, try to build those up because if they don't catch up, they'll be behind the rest of their lives. I just wondered if you had that situation.
Yeah, so our second graders were actually in kindergarten. They did virtual kindergarten. And we have seen excellent results with using Spire, which is that intervention, that decoding. Like Brian said, C K L A offers a lot of read allowance. So it gives, you know, the teachers the opportunity to give that knowledge. A student's auditory level and their reading level, they don't even like come to match until they're about 13 years old. So students can comprehend like, I can't even think about how to say that, through their ears. Yes, their auditory, yes, it's better than their reading. So we have seen lots of success with Spire. Like I said, is that multisensory approach to decoding word is endorsed by the International Dyslexia Association. And so we have probably more kids in second grade receiving interventions than any of the other grade levels. But that's okay because we're going to get them out of those interventions by third grade.
I might have missed it. What is C K L A?
Core Knowledge Language Arts. It's actually an open source, C K L A is. However, Amplify has had, I guess monetized it and made it better with lots of things. And so that's where they have worked.
Mr. Trimble, I may ask, they both just, by not coincidence, that's fair because they're not all H Q I Rs and High School Research Resources or knowledge-based curriculum, but Amplify C K L A is not the only option for districts. So there are other choices. E L Education is a wonderful, highly rated program. With Wisdom is another one, and there are more. So the New York Pointy District, those to those knowledge building curriculums specifically, it is not all, but it is more than just that one.
I've heard so many great things about letters. We've got 1800 teachers doing it. How can we get so many more involved in this?
And that is part of our promotional goals, working with the Division of Communications as well. So our registration for phase two opens May the first, and it will be open through August 31st. So we have learned much after having phase one and know that teachers need a little bit more time to start the school year before they jump into this intensive professional learning. And so Christie really pushed me on that and our thinking around what that would look like at the local level. So May one, we are opening that up for registration and very hopeful that we will have many who are wanting to participate.
I can just add to that. From our perspective, we just had volunteers that did letters training this year, but word of mouth has been very powerful. We have three elementary schools in our district. At two of them next year, every single teacher has committed to sign up letters training. And at the third one, it's about 8%.
And we offer stop-ins for this because it is a lot of work. While it is like 30 hours face to face, there's 96 to 120 hours of self-study, self-work on an online platform. So we try to monetize that a little bit to make it a little less daunting.
And at Hancock County, if I can add, we did do stipends. We also, we have those young teachers that have children at home. So we also did offer a substitute. So for those that needed to or did not have the time at home in the evening or weekends.
Dr. Poe? Okay, Dr. Tom and Dr. Poe.
As a letter spot.
We have $10 million of K D E internal S R R funding that we have put towards that. So that will cover the three phases. But we also in Senate Phil nine have the Read to succeed fund, which currently has $11 million each year within the budget that can go toward the professional learning and the coaching model that we're also working to establish as well.
Dr. Tom?
I was just gonna, you know, I was waiting for trees over there to say amen. But I was gonna say, I was gonna go further than, and you can do those flips because you were a Dallas town witch. So what I wanna say is, I just wanna make it simpler than amen. I love you all. In 2008, in the first stimulus, this is what we were preaching back then. My job would have been a lot easier if I had you all. And this coming from K D E at that particular time, we didn't. But, you know, 2023 is great to have. So, you know, once again, I just want to say, you know, and we use back then game changer. You are, it's a lifesaver and those things. So thank you for, you know, what you're doing. I have so many things that I could talk about. But, you know, we were preaching back then. We said, you know, Houston, we have a problem. And that was the knowledge. And I'm glad that you brought that out because a lot of people forget about the vocabulary and the knowledge piece and it's five different things.
That's where deeper learning.
Yes, the knowledge and context comes in there. And I think that when we talk about deeper learning in the article that you sent me also on that particular topic, people forget and they think deeper learning is something. No, it's that knowledge. We, there's so much knowledge out there, we can't teach it all. But in order to teach certain basics and those things, we need to have that knowledge and that fundamental skill. So thank you for what you're doing and please take this on the road more. I mean, I just spoke at the K A S A's Chief Academic Officers thing. And, you know, I was asked to tell my particular story, which I won't go into there. But for those that I know some of those in the audience, this is what we wake, this is what teachers wake up every day to do is to make a change of life the next day. I mean, that's why we're in, we're not in for pay and all the other stuff. So thank you. And, you know, we spent $1 million back in Boone that time to do work in Gillingham training just like you were all doing now. The problem was, and this is where I said yesterday in the A T R, that these are the types of fundings that we need, just not a structural type of thing. So districts can continue that. Our biggest problem that we had at Boone was the, that 10% of teacher turnover and keeping up with that, that we felt, and this is why we need to get our post-secundaries to change how it's being taught in the university. So we're not reteaching teachers coming out with the same system. Because we have teachers that are coming into the profession this year that haven't been taught the new approaches that, and we gotta retrain them. So this is, you know, we've got to work here to make sure that we continue. And I said that to, you know, President Thompson, that we're pushing our post-secundaries to have a correlation with us so that we're, so that we've got new teachers coming out. We don't have to retrain new teachers the first day they're in the classroom. So thank you.
Excellent. Oh, thank you. And then also have Paul. That's great.
Yes, I appreciated all of the conversation. It's really interesting to hear. I've been doing a lot of observations in Tennessee with some of my student teachers. And they've been using some of this curriculum for like four years. So it's kind of interesting to just hear about the beginning stages and seeing it there. It's been implemented for a while. One question I do have is about the E L A standards. I haven't dug into the Amplify curriculum, but I think one reason that we kind of got off track in literacy in Kentucky was when we went to bundling standards and then nothing really matched that. So teachers started pulling things and started teaching from teacher, pay teacher and things like that. I was just wondering, how does Amplify go with our Kentucky standards? I mean, is it aligned?
It is. So I will say, the graded resources on ed reports are more commonly aligned to common core state standards. So part of our curriculum development process that's established in the model curriculum framework in the Consumer Guide asks the stakeholders who are involved in that selection process to look for places where there would be misalignment or gaps. But the tier one comprehensive reading program is aligned to those reading standards for literature, the reading standards for informational tests. And in most cases, but not all, there is alignment to the foundational skills. But that is where, and I think if we were able to pick the brains more of our district leaders here, that's where often the supplement has to occur within, within those foundational skill standard bands. And so that we would say is a supplemental resource. But we do have guidance around how those resources should be in line with the evidence base then that is supported by that tier one comprehensive reading program as well.
All right, thank you. Dr. Glass.
Thanks. Just three things. One, the team at A D B, we pulled all this together. We're so proud of their work and how far it's come. It's been extraordinary. Acknowledged and the incredible work that we've done. And then Thomas, I'd like to card a note. I wanted to point out the extraordinary leadership demonstrated by Hancock County. I agree, I agree that.
You're gonna get in trouble.
You have a talented and knowledgeable person like Robin who speaks with condition and expertise. I'm trying to lose best of the top. Robin, please, they extend to, to, to the very other. And then finally, I have to, I wanted to acknowledge your loss in that. I'm not imaginable. I know that you can like 45 or something about that. But whatever you need and where you are, it's okay.
The whole Kentucky team, I think lots of smiley, heart facings going in. Thank you, Robyn. Another fun portion of our agenda today. It's been a delicious agenda all the way around as we will turn our attention to public comments. And I don't think we've had anybody in person, Stacy. Therefore, you all did receive in your portal a public comment piece from Dick Ennis with the Bluegrass Institute. And Dick is always really, you can always count on Dick sharing some information and data along with his presentation. So my appreciation to Dick for the, his comments around literacy. I'm hoping he was tuned in today, like he is, and was able to hear the presentation that we just heard as well. We've also make sure that those are forwarded to Mickey and the team for any specific response there as well. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Glass as we hear about the 2023 Robinson Award for Diversity and Equity in Public Education.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Samuel Robinson was a former member of the Kentucky Department of Education in 1991 to 2004, who made diversity and equity in public education of his life's work. Noted educator and civil rights leader, Robinson began his career at the Saffron Global in 1960. His diverse background in public education included everything from preschool at Shawnee High School, the president of the Lincoln Foundation. Robinson was also a well-known community figure as Louisville now gave it to civil rights era. Each year, the K D E grants this award to a Kentuckian or Kentucky organization demonstrating extraordinary efforts and contributions in the area of educational equity and diversity. The criteria for receiving this award include, but are not limited to, successful efforts in closing socioeconomic and or racial achievement gaps and significantly improving student learning, student achievement, and other major outcomes from schools of color or economic disabilities. At this time, it is my honor to announce the winner of the 2023 Robinson Award for Diversity and Equity in Public Education, Ms. Melody House. The gifted and talented, iHeartred teacher for Jefferson County Public Schools. I'd like to take, yeah, we'll say whatever. I'd like to take a few moments just to share about this deserving recipient. Please do have his people, we'll look forward to hearing something from him. Dr. House is the daughter of Amelia Lotz of Pigrum, a participant in the fight for freedom in her native country of South Africa. And Master Sergeant Charles Linter House, recipient of a broad and sobering award, two Purple Awards. Dr. House credits her family for teaching her the importance of fighting for those who know her prayer. While serving as the only minority teacher of the arts at a performing arts school in Kentucky, she noticed the minority students who had high academic aptitudes or talent in the arts were not getting their educational needs served well. These students were black, brown, and exceptional child education. I agree with you, like you're learning this, and economically they're abandoned. This motivated her to go back to school, get her gifted and talented certification. House students like them today, House, is a gifted talent educator, advocate who incorporates theater to help reach her students. Written a play about gifted and talented students in power, marginalize students and highlight overlooked voices. Thank you for being here. Congratulations.
For me, looking at diversity and looking at equity is something that is part of having our educational. It's a right, the social system that we need to look at. Personally, I also try to incorporate the idea of steam instead of stem, right? The arts, I think, is integral in how we are to allow our students to work through a lot of our common core subjects. And then they can actually use that in order to create that richer knowledge that we've been talking about and I've been hearing talked about today. For me, also, the arts is a way for us to incorporate our social emotional learning goals and skills for, especially, I saw a lot of my students coming back from COVID. And it is just trying to work together and having conversation and try to work around masks. And so since theater is also motion and work, it is one of those things that, you know, I found that I had to start to do a theater for life. And in that way, we can also teach those skills to our students. It also got me the nomiker of Dr. Mama Bear. And so my students would say, hey, Dr. Mama Bear, I need to talk to you. And so I say, well, which one, which side of the mama bear do you need? Do you need the, oh, we're gonna come over here, we're gonna do this? Or do you need me to growl at you a little bit? You know, and so the idea that kids are coming and asking for their needs, that you can stop and say, okay, thank you for saying that. But how do we repattern that and using theater to do that? With gifted and talented students as well that I work with now, that is also what is needed. And especially when we're looking for our populations that aren't usually looked at, our black and brown students, our students of color, our students who are free and reduced lunch, our students who are F C L, and also our T E students, our T E students. Because a lot of the times, we miss, we, there is an idea that just because a student is T E, they cannot be gifted and talented. And that is something that is, that needs to be busted. So I thank you. And a lot of the times, I do hear my mom's voice now, may she rest in peace. And just thank you. Thank you for this honor.
Thank you. If you could hang around a little bit, we'll turn things back over to Chair to close the meeting. And then we, I think we got a place outside my office where we can do some photos and Caleb could take that with you, but I'll get this to you.
Excellent. Congratulations, Melody. And we would like to invite you to join us for lunch.
Thank you.
And some photos before that. Board members, thank you so much for a great day, two days of learning and decision-making and for your continued engagement in really important work of this board. At this time, I'm open to a motion to adjourn.
So may.
Excellent, Mr. Trimble. Second? We have a second. Dr. Poe, can always count on Dr. Poe to get out of here. All those who show a favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much.